Apparently Riva is having some technical challenges. We're gonna wait just a moment. See if they can join us.
Sorry about that, computer issues, I apologize.
No worries, everything sorted out?
Yes, it is.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Almost gonna have to call Tom Lynch in on this one. All right. It is after five o'clock and we do appear to have a quorum. Riva, would you please call the roll?
I sure will. Brandon Foster?
Present.
Keith Furman?
Present.
Barbara Harrington McKinney? Randy Houdal?
Present.
Christopher McKeel?
Here.
Tom Wilson?
Here.
Margaret Bergamini?
Here.
Adrienne McCullough?
Here.
Carolyn McAndrews?
I'm here.
And Baltazar Deanna Santana is going to be out tonight.
Thank you, Riva. We do have a quorum, so this meeting is called to order. Because we have one vacancy and one person absent, Margaret, both you and Badri are in voting status for the duration of the meeting. Approval of minutes from our October 4th, 2021 meeting, assuming all members have had a chance to review those if they so chose, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Chris? Is there a second?
Hold on a second. I saw that item four lists me and Margaret as alders and I'm not ready to assume that responsibility, so I will move approval with the change to that.
Thank you. So there's a motion, is there a second? Second by Badri, discussion? Any further discussion? All right, with that change made, all those in favor of approving our minutes from our October 4th, 2021, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Chair, please unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, a little bit on is unanimous, thank you. Are there any registrants for public comment for items not on the agenda? I didn't see anything in my email.
No, I didn't see anything.
Okay, thank you, Riva. Are there any communications, disclosures or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none, our first item for the evening then is just our 67834, streetery and street parking.
All right, good evening, everyone. So we've got, this is an item for discussion and input brought to you here tonight. For a little bit of background, and I do have a presentation to walk through. There was a streetery program created under the emergency actions taken. At that time, most or all fees were waived. Many of the typical rules and processes were also waived to create a temporary emergency program, which has been widely popular and folks are looking to continue that on a more permanent basis. But with that, do need to develop a more formal process with approval process and also a fee structure. So I will disclose that Megan Blakehorse and Rebecca Canare have been sort of leading this process and program are unable to join us here tonight. So I will do my best to answer any questions specific to some of those, the program specifics and vending. But unfortunately, they are not able to join us this evening. And I'm just gonna share my screen. Okay, so hopefully everyone's seeing that. Okay, great. Just in terms of what we're looking for tonight, this is just for discussion and feedback at this time. So not looking for emotion or decisions specifically, although if there were any recommendations, certainly welcome to make formal recommendations via motion. But really looking to get feedback before the more formal drafting process begins on the numerous ordinance changes that would be will be required for this. So just in terms of process, there were participant survey as well as a staff survey done. Variety of businesses participated with different types of streetery programs. Most of them said that yes, they would like to continue. A number of benefits that they identified that were most important to them with that streetery program were listed in that feedback. With easy approval process, the ability to have streets in the right of way and that ability to expand outdoor eating were noted as important. Some of the highlights that were identified as desirable, umbrellas, pop-up tents, heaters and lights. In terms of some of the staff surveyed, they felt that having a streamlined approval process was a critical part of this program. There are a number of, had it gone through more of a traditional process, would have been quite a lengthy and cumbersome process with the various approvals and fees. Also having flexibility built in, point liaison for coordination. Staff also liked that it prioritized pedestrians over vehicles and made good use of unused parking spaces. Things that did not work, permit confusion from all involved. There were some concerns with accessibility, curbside pickup stalls, lack of short-term parking and ADA compliance that some staff members identified. Securing and storage of items on the sidewalk with furniture being left out overnight. And coordinated fee structure, obviously their fees were waived at this point, but that was identified as something that would be needed. So when we met as a staff team, we took a look at what the fees would be under kind of current fee structures. With sidewalk cafes, those are the first two identified based on a square footage basis, 550 per square foot. For the mall concourse and outside of that area, $3 per square foot. The extension of premises, the large items however, were parking meter hood usage based on what those costs would be for a six-month a streetery program taking two metered spaces out of service would be 6,480. In addition to street occupancy permit costs, which come up to about 19,320 for two parking spaces, 14,000 for two angled stalls. Those fees were identified as much higher than comparing to the cost related to a sidewalk cafe after we used that kind of traditional pricing approach with a streetery program. So we'll go into the proposed fee structure a little bit later, but having an overview of the process. In May 2020, the streetery program was created through the emergency order. Some additional updates were done and extending the program. There have been some participant staff surveys and we've been in the process of developing various fee and application structure and policy suggestions. And then this month, we're bringing kind of the, at least what we've got now for recommendations and some outstanding questions to you, DCC and VOC before those kind of final program is drafted and put into an ordinance proposal. And then looking to get that finalized later this year for introduction and creation of a proposed formal and permanent streetery program. Just in terms of some of the ordinances that we're looking at, there's quite a few, as you can see. I'm not gonna go into the detail, but there are quite a few areas that will need to be coordinated in ordinance to create this program in a more streamlined process. So again, just a kind of timeline here, we're here today, goes to DCC for just discussion and input later this month. And again, introduction and referrals later this year. Just an overview on some additional outreach that has been done to date. I think also looking for if there's any additional community outreach that you'd like to see that hasn't already been addressed or other committee or board referrals as well. So getting to some of the remaining program policy questions, and I think, you know, typically we'll go through kind of the full staff presentation. It might be helpful to sort of pause on some of these questions and open it up for discussion if that works for all of you. So one of the first items, looking for input on currently for sidewalk cafes, there's a required width for pedestrians to maintain six feet. Staff is recommending that it require a seven-foot pedestrian path. My understanding is that is often what is actually happening operationally and in practice as those plans are getting approved. But staff are recommending that be a formal program requirement. Also just looking for input on whether lateral expansion should be restricted or allowed unrestricted. And what that means is typically a business would be able to have a sidewalk cafe in front of their, the linear footage essentially in front of their business. If they have permission from a neighbor and they don't want to, that neighbor business doesn't want to have a sidewalk cafe, they could provide permission to allow that business to expand into theirs. So 100% expansion, for instance, would be if the business had 50 feet, it could allow up to 100 feet total. Or with a 50-foot or 50% rate, that would be a 75-foot total linear width that they could have. So looking for any feedback thoughts on these two questions.
Hold it, Foster, go ahead.
The, is this across the board or just for the campus mall State Street area?
I think this is across the board that they're looking for that with regard to the sidewalk cafe.
The required sidewalk width is currently six feet, staff recommending seven feet pedestrian path. You know, a lot of places we have five-foot sidewalks, so maybe I'm just not understanding what the question is.
I think typically this would apply to mall concourse area where you have those wider terraces. In those areas to have a sidewalk cafe, there needs to be maintained a minimum of six feet.
I guess maybe what I would recommend is that we should, maybe staff could consider pedestrian volumes in different parts of the city and maybe we should just have, maybe we should have different requirements depending on those areas. So yeah, I think, you know, keeping at least seven feet on State Street, for example. Yeah, that makes sense to me. I mean, maybe there's even a case that it should be eight foot, so I guess, I think tying it to kind of pedestrian volumes would be important and then not, I mean, I don't think it makes sense to require seven feet for a different part of the city where there's only a five-foot sidewalk. The other thing though is that I think we should also be considering clear space. So, and this is kind of a general feedback I would have also for where it's adjacent to either pedestrian or bike travel. I think we should, I think we need to make mention of that as well. So perhaps seven feet could be that, it could be a five-foot sidewalk and a clear space on each side, but I've saw some examples where it, you know, the cafe and fencing, et cetera, went right up to the edge of something and typically like for a bike lane, for example, you'd need four-foot minimum and then also clear space on each side. And so I think that needs to be integrated into the into the requirements. And then in terms of the lateral expansion, I don't have any concerns of going up to 100%, but also I'm wondering about if there's any reference to other uses of the terrace space, so benches that might be there or bike parking or any other number of things that are in there. Do we have to call that out or and say you can't just rope that into your streetery area or how do we deal with those things where there are other street furniture or other elements within the space?
All right, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, hi Sabrina, a question for you, good to see you. Did we have any just purely sidewalk cafes in areas outside of the State Street Mall and the square?
That is a great question. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I would be curious to know that or curious to, and it kind of goes to the issue of how wide is the sidewalk, you know? If it's in an older neighborhood with narrower sidewalk, would that requirement, seven-foot requirement exclude those places from setting this up? Should it become desirable at some point in the future? I think South Park Street, Monroe Street, et cetera. Willie Street, Hatwood Avenue. Otherwise, I mean, I would tend to want the wider pedestrian path and I also would be concerned about completely usurping public uses of the space, you know, as Alder Foster said, you know, kind of roping in the public use benches. Otherwise, I'm not concerned about lateral expansion. Also want to know exactly how they document permissions for that lateral extension, if it's permission from the tenants of those buildings, the owners of those buildings or both if they're not the same.
Sure, and my understanding is both on that question, that it's required of both the tenant and the owner.
Okay, good.
Go ahead, Alder Foster.
I think just one other quick thought on the lateral expansion question. In an area kind of like in that photo, I guess, if for somewhere like State Streets where I think it's beneficial for folks to be able to cross the street mid-block, do we want to consider requiring, you know, no more than X amount of feet of continuous, whether it's one operator or three neighbors that are all at 100%? Should we, should we be kind of requiring some some width of gap every so many feet to allow people to to get in without having to walk down a really long stretch of continuous cafe areas?
All right, any further comments at this point? Or questions? Right, seeing none, go ahead Sabrina.
All right. So in terms of the proposed fees, so we talked a little bit ago, looking at between, you know, 14,000 and 19,000 would be the cost for a streetery taking two spaces out of service. So we looked at a different potential fee model, tying it to the existing sidewalk cafe fee structure that would look rather than at the street occupancy program and fee calculations under that, as well as how we typically would calculate spaces out of service and meter fees. And looked at how we might still recoup some of those costs associated with both lost revenues from metered parking as well as staff time administering the program. And looked at, again, tying that to the sidewalk cafe. So essentially it would be a $2 surcharge from the cafe fee structure. So 750 per square foot for something that's in the mall concourse area. Outside the mall concourse, $5 per square foot. So this would, in terms of how those would be sort of allocated, it would be 550 per square foot in the mall concourse area would go to parking utility. Those would generally be metered spaces that would be taken out of service, so a little bit higher rate for those. So the 550 would go to parking utility. A dollar per square foot to traffic engineering and then a dollar per square foot to EDD and vending. Then with the outside of mall concourse area where that's the $5 per square foot, that would be a dollar going to parking, $3 to traffic engineering and $1 to EDD and vending. We're estimating that it would recoup about, you know, 80% or so of existing revenue with a seasonal program that would not take spaces out of service for the entire year. As well as the assumption that there would be, folks would still park likely in an off-street facility if there was not on-street and so there'd still be some revenue generated but at a lower rate. And these are estimated to cover the staff costs for traffic engineering and economic development with this and a majority of parking utility costs. I guess one, I think, item for for consideration is that it would charge a lower and different rate for this program with a streetery program than other businesses, so contractors or other uses that might be having to get a street occupancy permit or paying for spaces out of service. So there would be, you know, I guess, different treatment of different businesses. However, this does provide an active use in the space where those construction activities don't. So would like your input on kind of that policy perspective as well and just the overall proposed fee structure.
Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Sabrina, I had requested this at EDC and I don't, I don't see this being talked about, but I'd like to get a better understanding with, you know, you don't need to tell me this now, but I don't think you actually have the answer necessarily. But what would 400 square feet cost annually or seasonally if I was renting a storefront? So some sort of comparison, understand, you know, how much are we selling or renting public property for versus if somebody were to rent, you know, a storefront? I agree, I don't have a concern with this being, you know, less expensive than those other uses because this is a community use. So I agree with that. I mean, I continue, you know, I'm preaching to the choir when I say this, I continue to be very worried about your revenue, the parking utility as well as the reserves, you know, looking over the budget presentation this year. Really continue to just highlight the point that you guys have just lost just so much money over the last few years, no fault of your own, obviously. You know, the council has done a great job taking that money for other things as well as COVID really affecting revenue. And so, you know, I, I assume you're okay with this, the shifting of revenue to a point and hopefully have come up with a number that you're somewhat comfortable with, you know, to keep this program going. That's kind of an oddly phrased question, but, you know, as candid as you can be, I mean, what are, you know, how comfortable are you with this reimbursement?
Sure. This was actually, the proposal was brought forward by parking utility, you know, essentially with the understanding that and I don't have the exact number, but I want to say this is about, the rate would be about 70% of what it would cost, again, don't quote me exact, but for actual indoor retail space on a square foot basis. So if we were looking at kind of full permit fees, it would likely exceed significantly what a business could rent actual retail indoor space for. So that was one of the reasons, you know, why we looked at something that would be, you know, more reasonable from their perspective for the program. And in terms of comfort level, you know, I would say that I am, I guess, 95% comfortable with this. You know, I think it does generally provide most of our revenues. And again, how much lost revenue is there when you take into consideration potential demand increases from streeteries that could also be a destination? So, you know, it's hard to necessarily measure lost revenue or how many trips are generated specifically for folks coming down to the street program that would otherwise not have been generated in terms of revenue. And additionally, how many of those folks are that are using the streetery primarily, right, are walking or biking versus, you know, are there a large percentage of people who are driving and paying us just at a different space? We certainly have at this point with COVID plenty of capacity. So I think in terms of
The time is now 5:30 and a quorum is present, so I will call this October 18th, 2021 meeting of the Plan Commission to Order. First, we will hear from Jesse Poole, our technical facilitator. Jesse?
All right, welcome to our virtual Plan Commission meeting. We're gonna cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link. We're calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair clerk and technical facilitator responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak. The name you entered, uh, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name um in registration. You will be, uh, you remain muted until called upon upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the commission, please send it to the email listed in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, the first item on our agenda is plan commission, public comment period. I do not believe we have any public comment. Could you confirm, Heather?
Yeah, I think, I mean, yeah, I think.
Okay, uh, the next item is communications disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Do we have any disclosures or recusals or communications? Seeing none, I do have one item to mention. We will be um having a new plan commission.
Uh, your quality of life, et cetera. I definitely would would hope that, you know, there's thought on, you know, building some sort of review process there, but thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Sure. So Sabrina, and I apologize, I'm so fuzzy on this, but. Sorry, is is the bottom line for a, say, downtown space? So I guess assuming we're in the mall concourse category. You, with the proposal, we would basically lose twenty percent of the revenue as compared to kind of current state or pre-COVID state?
Yeah, that's, uh, so we compared that with twenty nineteen revenues. Uh, so when we are saying eighty percent, um, yes, that we'd lose twenty percent of the pre-COVID revenues.
Um. So if if we wanted to break even with what we were making when we were using charging parking. Um, I I guess I'm not sure, maybe this includes areas outside of the mall congress as well, but so we we have to be at like nine dollars a square foot instead of seven fifty then? And that would, that would make the break even point?
Yeah, I'd have to, you know, kind of run those numbers and take a look, but. But certainly it it could be, you know, there could be an increase to what's proposed.
And but so when you say that, like, that's for parking utility, but then you also described certain amounts of the of the fees going to T E or vending. Um. So does that mean the overall money generated? I guess it's because of an increase in staff costs and those other agencies, so that's sort of trying to offset their costs. And then what's left goes to parking utility, which doesn't re- doesn't quite recover what you're bringing in now?
Uh, sort of. So what we proposed was the, of the seven fifty. Fee five fifty of that would go to parking utility. Uh, that calculation uh provides, you know, that's where we look at the the eighty percent of existing revenue. Uh, and then the the it would be a one dollar per square foot uh fee that would go to to traffic engineering. Uh, for the mall concourse and then three dollars for areas outside. Uh, and that would essentially be to help recoup uh their staff time as as well as some of those um. Uh, some of the loss that would otherwise be charged for um the street occupancy permit process. So those fees are being waived uh through this. Uh, whereas street occupancy permit would not be required, but there is still, however, that traffic engineering review process. Uh, for requirements, you know, for barricades and review. So that's intended to to cover uh any of their staff labor time.
What was the third agency that got a cut of the?
Uh, economic development and the vending program. That essentially does the the lion's share of of the review with the the program.
Um. And then do you, would you anticipate any reduction in parking enforcement costs? With the change in use?
No, I would not.
Um. Okay, I guess, I like high level. Hmm, I don't, I don't really feel like we should be subsidizing. I I'd be okay with not making as much money as we could possibly make. Through parking meters. But I guess I would want to make sure that we are recovering all of the costs that that go into the staff time review from any of the agencies. As well as covering the costs of the facility. So this is something we've talked a little bit about in terms of our overall. Like parking permit costs, et cetera, where we, I mean, we are publicly. Even land costs aside, we're publicly constructing these areas, maintaining them and reconstructing them. That's not free. Uh, so I would, I guess, maybe if if we could get some more information at some point around that, um, to make sure that we are fully covering all the public. Investments, um, I think that would be valuable, but perhaps that is already happening and we're we're simply saying that we're okay. Making less money than we could um make if we were renting the space out for car parking.
Uh, Tom Lynch, let's give a comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I think this is more of a clarification. This is, you know, obviously a policy decision in your hands. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that. Sabrina mentioned this, but there's some elasticity in this, meaning that um. Uh, a space that's removed from on-street doesn't mean that that person doesn't come downtown. The, uh, so it's just that they might park somewhere else. And we don't know exactly what that elasticity is. And then also, she also, um, and that's in the bullet, and then also. These uh. Streeters do generate trips, right? And that that trip represents a. A revenue opportunity. And so it's, I think it's very difficult to. Be able to say, well, with with precision, you know, what is the one-to-one ratio where we don't lose any money? I I just wanted to, I think Sabrina mentioned that, I just thought I'd. Clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, a quick question, Sabrina. In the past month or two, any idea what the occupancy rates have been at the downtown ramps? Not the on-ta- not so much the on-street parking, but the ramp themselves.
Yeah, it does um vary a little bit. Um, just see if that the notes handy. Um. Uh, but so essentially, I think we're still at um about thirty percent. Uh, with uh Wilson Street Garage of of um total average occupancy. Um, in general, still under fifty percent at all facilities. I believe the only. Uh, one that we were at a little bit over fifty percent was the State Street Campus Garage. Um, and and we do have a number of twenty-four seven residential permit holders there. Uh, so that has created some stability of of occupancy, but uh but in general, still still below fifty percent. In many cases, uh, below forty percent.
And another. Question slash comment, I guess, uh, unrelated to that. Um. When I think about Madison summers, I immediately think of construction. And I. With a program like this. Obviously, if, for example, there was a need to. Care up sidewalk for utility construction or, you know, emergency repairs, et cetera. I I guess I would be curious and and this is not something that requires an answer now, but some kind of. Some kind of policy to address. What would happen in that instance if, say, somebody, if if, say, a restaurant lost? Fifty percent of its sidewalk space. They get a refund for it. Um. What if they lose it simply because the space becomes inhospitable, not because it's turned into a hole? Um, so I guess I would, I would just want the city to kind of cover its bases in terms of liabilities. Or the predictable. Unpredictable construction projects that we often have in these zones.
All right, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Alder Foster.
Yeah, one other question is, so this this would all be through a staff review. Is the expectation that anyone with. Parking stalls in the street um along their frontage? Can apply and and is expected to be able to get that space, or is there a, the staff? Do they have the potential to say, no, parking demand is too great here? We're not, that that's not an option for you? Or how is that? Uh, how is that determined? Or we just, in any, in any, no matter where, if you apply for it, you will, you will be granted it, you just have to pay the fee?
So there are um. Certain requirements in terms of graphic engineering, so that I think the greatest review would be with uh traffic engineering in terms of what the. You know, safety, traffic volumes, does it meet the requirements of uh streets that would be eligible? Uh, to to have a streetery. From a a parking perspective, there's not currently proposed uh to be the ability to reject. On the basis of parking demand. Uh, however, the, and it's. In a, in an upcoming slide, one of the the questions is related to ADA access. Um, and the ability for parking utility to uh deny or or reduce the requested size. Of uh of a streetery if there is a uh need or lack of uh other options for uh dispat spaces. Uh, but other than that, there is not currently built into the review uh process of criteria related to parking uh demand.
So maybe it's something we could also get some more info on. I mean, in in general, I. You know, feel like I would be supportive of swapping non-street parking for for these kind of wherever, but on the other hand, when you think about how many. Transportation decisions we make, where we prioritize the parking over all kinds of other things. It seems like at a minimum, we should reserve some ability to say, no, this. This space um is is too valuable for whatever reason, and maybe it's not for regular on-street parking, but at least for. I mean, there's loading zones, there, I mean, hopefully we get, we go more towards like very short-term parking and, yeah, loading pickup kind of stuff. So I just, I guess I would, I would not want to set an expectation that we can't. For for any, you know, anything that's a public purpose, say, no, actually, this this location is not eligible for. This program. Um, I think, I think we should be careful about that and make sure we have some way to uh. To say no if if we have other uses that we think trump uh street cafe.
Um, Yang, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, on that, I just want to add that, uh, that's a really good point, and Sabrina, I think, has key on this. Uh, uh, you know, definitely will review uh. Every application for safety applications, uh implications, if there are any safety concerns, we're not a, definitely not approved. Uh, but also, you know, one, I'll say, maybe we can look at it, so you know, the uh accommodations for people with disabilities. So if, you know, from ADA perspective, a certain stalls are very valuable. Uh, to serve uh those who are in need, uh, maybe you should reserve those as well. So just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Yang. Chris, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Chair. I was actually just wondering, I'm sort of sitting on some questions from earlier and. I feel like the conversation's going in a bunch of directions now, so should we launch into more stuff now or wait until the end of the presentation?
Um, sure, ma- maybe go on to some of the next couple of slides because it might uh bring up some of those other questions and and then kind of open it up here at towards the end.
Thanks.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, so this is just some some examples of what those costs would be um based on the the current uh proposed fee structure. Uh, so so one of the other questions is, um, you know, there are implications with regard to street sweeping. Um, just general maintenance um. Uh, and and cleaning is, should cafes be allowed to store equipment out overnight? Uh, on the sidewalks and in parking lane. Um, certainly the. The operators would like to be able to leave them out and just secure them. Um. But there there are some certainly conflicts uh with that. Uh, I did want to, I guess I'll just point out as well that, uh, you know, the proposed timeline is um from April to November, so it would. Uh, currently not be including issues with uh snow removal, although that's a. Uh, another question uh for additional discussion, but this is just related to non-snow months. Um. Should furniture be allowed to be left out or, um, you know, require? Cafes to to bring furniture in at night?
Thoughts? All right, well, perhaps someone will have a a comment that comes up as you continue.
All right. Uh, so the other item is, uh, so staff are not recommending allowing uh permanent structures. Uh, and the feeling is that those are really just, uh, would be expanding the the private uh building and in retail space into the public right of way to do so. Uh, but should we allow items such as sort of semi-temporary? Uh, semi-permanent fencing or um sort of decking platforms that that are removable? Now I can continue on to the next one of folks when I think about that. Uh, so as I mentioned, the, what we're recommending is April fifteenth through November fifteen. Uh, the April fifteenth would essentially coincide with the start of the vending season uh in November fifteen. Using the date when snow emergency begins. Uh, so just looking for your input on on that, uh, whether they should be seasonal. Or, uh, you know, should we allow in some circumstances a cafe to have a twelve-month? Um, streetery?
Um, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, yeah, and I thi- I think we should consider some way to. Extend the season. Um, I know in a lot of conversations I had with. Street superintendent around the emergency, emergency piece of it. Um, you know, we've. Even starting that at November fifteenth, I mean, certainly we have snow events. That early, but um also those will typically. I mean, we we might have piles go through, but it's not, um. Usually warms up before then, you know, ground's not quite frozen yet, and so I, I think we don't really. I think there's a difference from like streets perspective around the the real hardcore plowing time that doesn't necessarily start at November fifteenth and. Definitely still have some some decent weather at that time, so I guess I would be in favor of thinking about ways to extend. At that time, so I guess I would be in favor of thinking about ways to extend past that season. And especially if, and maybe assuming that they, that whoever, um. Whoever has it is responsible for their own. Snow clearing, et cetera, right? So like, it's, I think. If we're expected to clear the area, then having all the stuff out of the way makes sense, but if they're willing to take that on and it doesn't cause any. You know, if we can basically go past it and they'll deal with. Us doing the rest of our work, and if there's a way to make that work, I wouldn't be opposed to allowing some. Uh, some way for that to go beyond November fifteenth.
Uh, Randy, go ahead.
Do you currently have any, um? Any requests out there for year round? Uh, have you, have you been approached?
So my understanding is that there are uh some number, uh, probably not. Uh, a ton, but that there would be some interest. Uh, from, from operators in, in being able to operate year lo- year round.
Okay, can you define what a ton, not a ton? I mean, you're talking ten?
You know, I'm, I don't have those numbers. Uh, I know that there'd been some just discussions and and feedback. Uh, I believe with um the vending, Rebecca and and Megan from some of those conversations, so. I don't have the numbers on how many would be interested specifically.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that looks like all the comments for the moment.
Uh, the next question is in terms of uh special event conflicts. Uh, with sidewalk cafes, there, there's an invalidation process where. Um, the, the operators can be required to take those down during special events or. Um, other issues. Uh, with streeteries, uh, you know, how should we handle uh some of the larger special events? Should it be? Uh, an invalidation process, uh, like the sidewalk cafes? Uh, or should the event organizer essentially plan their event around uh existing street locations? Um, and then sort of the additional question is, uh, if we were to invalidate, should it be for? Uh, all types of events or just the larger uh legacy events?
Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Might not be exact answer to your specific question, but generally, I think we, I think it's important that we maintain the, the right to require. Things to be cleared out of there on a temporary basis. So if we feel that of any given event. Really requires that for whatever reason, I, I think it's important that the expectation is that this is a. It's sort of a privilege, yep, we're charging them for use of this public space, but I think in general, we need to, we need to hold the ability. To call that back in either on a, like, for a day. Or or whatever, and you know, we could certainly. Refund certain amount of, you know, that day's worth of thing, or I mean, I don't know exactly the details, but I just, I think we should not get in a situation. Where we have a program that's, that trades an entitlement that we feel like we, now we can't touch. So, I mean, at the end of the day, this is still public right-of-way, it's still really critical, I think it's a great program, but. Let's, let's keep that um ability, at least with staff. To be able to say, hey, we have a, a different kind of public purpose that's gonna override this during this period of time.
Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I think if we're doing it for the sidewalk cafe stuff, then we certainly can do it for the stuff that's in the, the, um. You know, street as well. I mean, I think there certainly would be a concern. In general with, you know, the ability for that business to move their items, you know. Um, and so I think it really sort of cascades into those other questions about, you know, how permanent can they have their structures? And are they storing it overnight, et cetera? And yeah, so if we tell a business, you know, you need to, you can't do it on this particular day, um, and they need to, you know, they don't have a place to actually store their stuff. Um, because they're used to just keeping it out twenty-four seven during that time period, it certainly creates. You know, an, an interesting situation, but if we're already dealing with that for sidewalk cafe licenses. Um, you know, I see no reason not to, to do something similar with this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're good to continue.
Uh, this is just um some notes about uh other considerations, um, some that aren't uh currently. Uh, required, but uh items that staff are looking at as possible requirements. Uh, in a permanent pro- uh, program. Uh, so curb ramp, if over half of cafes in the roadway. Uh, curb tape, uh, looking at spacing, uh, requiring a mix of, of different table types. Uh, again, one of the notes was just concerns about losing, uh, and or having to relocate ADA parking. Uh, so traffic engineering does have a list of, you know, safety requirements, uh, that, that they specified with. Uh, temporary program. Uh, also, one of the recommendations, uh, we had. Was that, uh, staff can restrict the size of a cafe as necessary. Uh, for the purpose of writing ADA spaces. Uh, I know Alder Foster also mentioned. Um, expanding that to if there are other uh reasons why we might. Uh, want to make use of those uh spaces for, for other reasons, or looking at uh parking demand needs.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I like the concept of being thoughtful about, you know, perhaps requiring a, a. Ramp if more than fifty percent is in the street. Um. I don't know if there's another way to, um, kind of using the, like, requirements around. Uh, accessible parking stalls and kind of the, you know, the sort of percentage that you would have as opposed to sort of parking. Um, I don't know if that's a decent analog or not, but that would be maybe another way to think of that, that a, a certain percent of. The, the tables need to be accessible for wheelchair users, um, or something like that. Um, might be another way to, to measure that rather than the fifty percent.
All right, thank you. Uh, just one item, uh, staff is not recommending, uh, continuing allowance of, uh, live music in the. Permanent program, uh, due to conflicts with, with neighbors and and others. Uh, so there were some crop-ups of, uh, amplified. Speakers and and movies, um, under the temporary program. That weren't allowed under streetery, but those weren't enforced. Uh, so one of the other recommendations would be. Uh, not allowing those types of uses in the street program. Uh, and this is a, uh, a separate issue, and I think, you know, perhaps we could pause here before. Uh, getting in into this, uh, this isn't necessarily something that, uh, we're working on as an ordinance. Item or in, in terms of incorporating, uh, with the street program. Uh, but just something, wanted to get some, uh, just initial input feedback as, as we start to. Have discussions on, on how we should address the curb side pickup. Um, so for a little bit of background, uh, this initially started when we s- suspended enforcement of all on-street. Restrictions, including parking meters, uh, the required payment at meters as well as the time limit restrictions. Essentially, you know, served the need for, uh, the turnover in, in short-term parking. Uh, but when those were suspended, uh, during, you know, daytime hours. Uh, during the summer, we saw some significant concerns, uh, with essentially hundred percent occupancy. Of long-term parking at on-street, uh, parking in the downtown area. Uh, and and businesses were concerned that, uh, they couldn't get, uh, their delivery drivers in. Uh, customers couldn't find short-term parking for, uh, for pickup and takeout. Also loading concerns, uh, with, with that. Um, so, so you know, one of the questions is, should we, um, essentially look at? Uh, having more short-term parking meters to, to replace those and. Uh, in eliminating that program, uh, should we look at, uh, some shorter-term? Uh, spaces that don't require payment, uh, that are just posted. As, uh, essentially fifteen-minute parking zone or or twenty-minute parking zone. Uh, so as you can see from the photo, there has been some. Uh, liberties taken from, from businesses to, to kind of designate. And actually number some of the on-street spaces, uh, for, for their businesses specifically. Uh, we've seen that in a number of locations, which, uh, these are, are not approved signs and the. Uh, current postings are essentially for, uh, short-term loading and and parking. Um, and, and we have seen some of these types of, of things popping up, so. Um, just looking for, for some feedback there, I think the other item I would note. Um, that, you know, the meter program doesn't currently address is that, uh, enforcement ends at six P M, so it's. Eight A M to six P M, Monday through Saturday, so it doesn't address that, that need for turnover in short-term parking. Uh, during evening hours or, or on Sundays, uh, so that's another consideration when. We look, uh, in the future, how we address this on a, um, permanent, uh, longer-term basis.
Uh, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, to me, part of. I wouldn't be able to begin to venture an opinion on this question until I had some sense of. What percentage of revenues for these restaurants and bars is coming? From their, from pickup, takeout, and, and how much is coming from their sidewalk and how much coming from their interior space? Um, and also does raise the question for me, you know, how long would we be intending to go on with this entire? Program? Um. You know, is this, uh, is this a plan that? Uh, being designed for sort of the medium-term recovery of these restaurants, et cetera? Are we talking about a permanent program? Uh, in which case. You know, the city really needs to be weighing. We need it, we need input, not just. From D M I and from the restaurants, et cetera, but from the other businesses and offices. On these, on these streets, how are they, how are they being impacted? Um. So it just, for me, this one just raises more questions. About the whole program.
Thank you, Margaret. Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think I, you know, agree that there, there, this again raises the question is, what is the new normal? Um, I think if you do twenty-five-minute, um, short-term parking in these spots, um, the likelihood that anybody's gonna put money in the meter. Um, during short-term usage is gonna be slim to none. Um, delivery drivers are not gonna do it, people waiting for curbside pickup are not gonna do it. Um, there, there's not going to be much revenue generated from these spots, and then after six o'clock. The issue that you're gonna run into is that people are just gonna park there, and the spots are no longer really available for that curb side or delivery driver usage. On the other hand, if these spots don't exist, I assume people are just gonna double park and, and create hazards, uh, et cetera. Um, I think I'm inclined to treat these similar to the streetery program where this is now, you know, rented out space by these restaurants. Um, and so it says, you know, staff wants to avoid the privatization of public parking spots for uses that do not bring vibrancy to the space. Um, I sort of get that position. On, on the other hand, I mean, this is a, a way to. Uh, you know, this is another form of, of restaurants being able to do business. Um. You know, similar to setting up a table outside, frankly, um, they could probably make a ton more money doing, uh, curbside pickup and delivery. Um, than, you know, having somebody sit at a table. Um, so I think there is value in looking at actually. You know, coming up with a pr- price scheme for, for these businesses to, to have one or, one or two spots similar to how it's done now. Um. You know, knowing that if, if it doesn't exist, there is a, a public, pub, pub, public, uh, there's gonna be public hazards there with people double parking, et cetera, so. It's, it's a really tough problem to solve. I mean, I think it was an easy thing for us to implement, uh, to, to save restaurants because they, they, they needed saving. And, uh, they needed to adjust, um, but I gotta imagine even as a, a patron of these services, uh, curbside pickup and delivery is not going away. Um, you know, I think the convenience, uh, is going to continue to exist. I think we need to figure out how we, you know, as a city, obviously adapt to it. Um, and I'd be inclined to be figuring out rates similar to the streetery program where the stores are, are paying us for those spots, um. With, with the understanding that it's good for their business and it's good for the city for those businesses to, to, to exist. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Alder Foster.
Yeah, I, I, um, I agree with that. I think this is actually kind of reflective of one of the points I made earlier about. Us needing to kind of have ownership of how we're gonna use our public space and. Um, my comments around not sort of subsidizing the, the cost for those streeteries. I feel like the, whether it's outdoor seating in the public right-of-way or. Short-term parking for delivery need or pickup needs, or really whatever the case is, if it's sort of in support of private enterprise and business. We should be, a- and it makes sense from a sort of public perspective, then we should. Allow it, we should designate the amount of space that's needed for the different kinds of things, and we should price it accordingly. And I think we should, you know, this is kind of part of a, of a shift in thinking away from like parking or not parking to curb-side management. And more dynamic pricing, and I mean, there's actually some really cool techn- techno- technologies. Um, that could make it more feasible to, to. Price for, um, loading zones and that sort of thing. I mean, there's, there's some. Cities that are doing stuff already with UPS drivers and and other sorts of things, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't think, it doesn't make sense to me that we would have a proper, a, a cafe or a restaurant is entitled to rent the street. But tables, but they can't rent the space to have of, of delivery drivers, um, if that's their business model and they're. They're meeting, meeting the needs of their customers that way, so. Um, yeah, I, I think we should be thinking of these things as, as parts of a whole. And pricing should be, uh, comparable. I mean, we don't, it doesn't have to be exactly the same. We could decide that we wanna. Charge a little bit less for this versus that if we think there's some other public benefit or public good to it, but in general, I think we should be. We should retain that, that power to make the decisions and, and we should, um, get compensated, uh, from private business. For whatever the kind of a true cost of the, of the space is.
Uh, Margaret, go ahead.
And I would also wonder i- if we're actually gonna. Let, let's say we did go down the path of. Continuing to permit specific businesses to take over specific spot. Uh, as designated, uh. Pickup, takeout locations. Uh, or, you know, which is essentially short-term parking. Are we going to extend that to other non-restaurant businesses? A- and that's not an idle question. Um, I've been around long enough to hear. Those types of recr- requests specifically from retail. Businesses on the square. Uh, which A, wanted short-term parking and. Wanted to dictate kind of the prices, the pricing of it. Uh, and if they could have reserved it for their businesses, they. You know, they certainly, they certainly would have. Uh, and then I think also of, yes, the issue of policing it, not just, not just after sick. But throughout. And then I think of the fairness issue of businesses. That shall go unnamed, but you know, located on, say, the five-hundred block of University Avenue. That are essentially having their, their delivery business. that are essentially having their their delivery businesses uh or their businesses that are uh being served by one of the many, you know, ride-share companies that are doing food delivery now. And they simply have their vehicles illegally parked, hopped up on the sidewalk, you know, hopping the curb and sitting there for hours and hours on end. If I were a business that was paying for dedicated spot, I would be thinking to myself, why am I paying for a dedicated spot when other people are just hopping the curb? Um why don't we just do that? And then also on a practical level, with some of these locations, I would really like to hear from Metro and um about whether or not they're having any issues with getting in and out of a bus stop um or having their shelters used or or private business use.
All right, and so that's all I had for folks today. I don't know if there are other comments um or questions.
So go ahead, Chris.
Thanks. Um I guess I'll start with, um are there places where we assume people would not want to set up a s- streetery? But they might, and for example, East Washington or something? Um and is there any anything in place that would prevent someone from um setting up a street around a very major road where it wouldn't seem safe?
There are, and I don't know if if Yang or someone in T E is on to speak to their review process with regard to some of the requirements of locations.
Yeah, great question, Chris. Yeah, um actually, uh like last year, uh we seri- seriously saw that we're going to get some requests from uh, you know, some of the ulterior streets uh such as Monroe Street, uh Winchester Street, and Addwood Avenue. Uh but, you know, to have surprise, we haven't gone, got any. Uh so I think our salt is that the, uh you know, uh last year, when traffic volume is low, you know, we feel like we can ser- seriously uh uh think of how to make it safe and accommodating those uh those needs. Uh you know, as the traffic volume increased, and also as we know that the people's driving behavior, um uh you know, is quite bad right now, uh so I think if we got those requests, we'll look at it the party uh on individual basis, because whether, you know, we feel it's a safe for for them to do so.
Thanks. I guess then, um that sort of informs my, the the question of whether folks should be allowed to set up structures. I think where where it sounded like you were heading, that sort of quasi-temporary platform structures are okay, but more built-up structures are not. I think that's, that sounds right to me. Um I've got another question, but I see Tom Lynch has his hand up.
Yeah, maybe in addition to what Yang said, is that the the streetery guide on any um street that had a certain volume or was considered a collector or above. They said it would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and then there are also um have to be additional safety measures, including concrete barriers and that effect, and so um there is pressure by T E on someone could set up with the on.
Thanks. Um I have another question. Um first of all, thanks for laying out all the current costs, the fees that would be applicable, I think. In addition to being a large number, it's kind of revealing how how complicated it would be to to figure out how to do this, so this, we obviously need to change that. Re- with regards to the fee landed on, would it be the same whether or not there was parking meters or not?
Uh so it's the, most of the locations that would uh have parking meters would fall under the uh seven fifty per square foot rate uh in the downtown in Mall Concourse. And then outside of that, uh would be the five dollar per square foot rate. There are some periphery locations that could, you know, potentially have uh meters um you know, that that could qualify uh for that five dollar, but in general, the vast majority would be in the the seven fifty.
Okay, thanks. Um then just back to this conversation of of what is the right price and, you know, use of the public space, I think landing on something that um make sure that that ensures that you still get revenues um and landing on something that is close to what it would cost to get equivalent retail space is the right way of thinking about things, but um I'm also struggling to see that um that these are naturally a better public good than than parking or whatever else. Um I think at the end of the day, it is g- giving over public space to 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 private entities, um and as good as that might be for the street or the neighborhood or whatever, I think it's something to consider. And it's not even clear to me that what folks would be willing to pay for this, like how valuable it is to folks, so. This might be a steal. I don't, I don't really know what the market is for for street space, so I think that's worth um keeping an eye on and thinking about, especially if this becomes a more long-term program. Um and then also to the to this recent discussion about um loading and and stuff, I think also thinking actively about how the city wants these spaces to be used, so. Should, you know, should the city be designating certain spaces for loading um to meet the policy goals that we have around traffic management and all that versus handing over space to businesses for streeteries? So just striking that right balance, I think, it's just gonna be hard to think about moving forward, but it's important. Um I have a one more different question, but I saw Alder Foster pop up. No, okay.
You still have the floor, so go ahead.
Okay, one last thing then. Um the uh you you listed like sort of the ordinance changes and policy changes that would be needed to to formalize this. Would those include letting um folks use their own private parking for patio space? Because I think that's a change that was enabled through the streetery program.
So my understanding was that would be that the private parking use issue would be handled separately from from the streetery program?
Okay, so you don't know whether the provision on music would also apply for those type, for those spaces?
I do not.
Okay. I don't know h- how to call attention to this, but I think we should be thinking about these in parallel. So it would be a shame if we 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 make the streetery, the streetery program on city parking um a a permanent thing and don't look at um how folks are able to use their private parking also. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
All right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. I wanted to um un- underscore what Chris said about pushing back a little bit on this concept that this is sort of necessarily a public good. I mean, I certainly like outdoor seating, I I get the sort of vibrancy of that as compared to car parking. Most people know I'm not a huge fan of subsidizing car parking. But it it definitely is and certainly is private and exclusive use of a public space, and I don't think we should lose sight of that. Um and so whether it's related to to pricing or any of those pieces, I mean, I think about the conversations around the Beer Garden and the Old Brick Park and you know, that, like that's still public, like you don't have to buy a beer and you can go and sit on those tables and be in that space. I don't think the same thing is gonna be true of these streeteries, right? You can't, but if you don't have money, you can't use that public space. So I think it is a real departure, and we should be clear about that and be a little bit careful of kind of describing it as sort of some quasi-public use, because I I don't think that's, I don't think that's true. So we should be, I think, keep that clear when we're thinking about pricing or thinking about these entitlements. A couple, a couple other uh quick quest or quick comments. One, um I'm I'm sure it's already on the radar for T E in terms of like uh vision triangles and sightlines, but just being really like making sure that's really baked into whatever um kind of standard review processes there are, especially around things like umbrellas or other structures where we like might think, oh, we're we're okay with this because this is already considered as far as, you know, you could have cars parked here. But when you start to have things that might be taller in different locations that are unanticipated, so just, um again, I'm I'm sure that's already covered by T E, but just really thinking about that um in terms of like furniture and those sorts of things. The other thing is really around uh that what we talked about with the with this curbside management question and sort of the pecking order, which to me just really dovetails into the next conversation we're gonna have around completing green streets. And um I think one sort of broad concern I have is you know, we we're sort of found ourselves in a place where we have these assumptions around how we use the right-of-way and entitlement for for on-street car parking. And, you know, historically, we've I would say in inconsistent with our adopted policies, we've we've given on-street car storage a priority over low-stress bikeways, for example, and, you know, I think we've started to challenge that in specific examples, especially in the last few years, and I hope we continue that pattern. But I I think we should be really thoughtful about that, and maybe there should even be a specific review by staff around, I mean, if we have, if we have areas that today have on-street car parking and don't have a low-stress bike facility. And now we're gonna sort of make the switch and say, but now now we can, we can give up the on-street parking for free cafes and still not have those on-street low-stress, all aid and ability bike facilities, that that's a question mark and a problem for me, and as we're, you know, as we go into this conversation about completing green streets. In the in the priority pyramid, you know, biking's gonna be ahead of of car parking. We don't even have streeteries on there, but I think it would be a real problem if we usher in a new era of let a bunch of cafes go up and and realize, oh, now we're gonna have to go fight with a bunch of merchants to say, you know what, we've decided we're gonna put bike lanes in here, and now instead of pulling out parking, we're pulling out beloved street cafes. So I think that's a really important question, and I mean, maybe towards that end and maybe towards some of the other comments I made tonight, instead of making this a sort of carte blanche, you know, anywhere in the city sort of thing, maybe we should actually designate areas and say, yes, anywhere along these streets or these frontages or all these locations, these are places that are that are eligible for um this program and eligible for this application. Because I just, I I guess I just really worry about this this mega shift towards like, yeah, now any, essentially any business owner or I guess restaurant, cafe, bar owner has the right to to request and be granted, assuming they meet the criteria, this exclusive use of of that public right-of-way and not have an opportunity for us to think through the the kind of the highest and best public use of that space. So would really be interested in how practical or impractical that might be. Um and then my last comment is just thinking about maybe also writing in some way for like Transportation Commission review, and whether that's for kind of extraordinary circumstances, or, you know, staff gets an application that maybe technically checks all the boxes, but they're aware of some potential issue. And I think allowing some kind of, you know, where they could bring that to Transportation Commission, say, hey, we want some feedback on this before we grant it and and have some mechanism, um where again, we're not, I really want to make sure we're not in a position where we are we've opened up some program and now are granting things that we actually don't think are a great idea, but we just didn't think about them and they're not, you know, it's not accommodated in our rules or oh, yeah, we should have, we should have had a bike lane there, we should have had a loading zone there, but now we're stuck because somebody put in their application and we have to grant this. Thanks for all the all the uh presentation, and obviously there's been a lot of work on into the thinking already, and hopefully we can maybe get another um, get some more information as things get tightened up before it gets introduced. I think it's it's an important one. Thank you.
All right, any further comments, questions? All right, thank you all for providing feedback to Sabrina. Thank you, Sabrina, for the presentation.
Thank you all very much.
All right, if there's nothing further, then we will move on to Legistar six-six-eight-nine-eight, uh Complete Green Streets update on Let's Talk Streets.
All right, so thank you. We are back. I know, um I think most of you were us on the committee when we were here with our last Complete and Green Streets update, but we have our consultants who've been working on this project with us. Um we have Adam Wood and Sonia Hekel from Tool Design and Annette Miller from Equity by Design, and there's kind of two parts to our our update this evening. Um the first part is about our Phase Two engagement called Let's Talk Street Streets, and it informs both our Complete and Green Streets project as well as our Vision Zero project. Um so we will have that, um and then we have a second part of it, which is focused just on Complete and Green Streets and is focused primarily on street typology. Um and I don't know if Tom or Yang have anything else they want to add, but if not, I will hand it over to Adam from Tool Design to kick us off.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can see my screen right now. Um all are at me if you can't for any reason. Um thanks. Thanks for having us um here this evening to talk with you. As uh Renee said, we're gonna start off speaking a little bit about the an update on the engagement, and uh Annette from Equity by Design and I are going to sort of tag-team this part of the presentation. She's been a really close partner in uh doing a lot of this work, not only from the perspective of engaging with the community and trying to make sure we're being inclusive in our outreach, but also talking about the implications for a lot of these decisions and how they play out um with regard to equity in our transportation system. Um a quick uh reminder update of the um kind of foundation of and and the reason why we're looking at the Green Streets, the the sort of purpose for this project. Um there are a lot of objectives that are listed up here on the slide about increasing the um streamlining, the decision-making, increasing consistency of results, uh making sure that we're uh doing things like increasing safety uh and addressing and preventing some of the uh inequities that have occurred in the past and and maybe some ongoing inequities in mobility and access and the impacts that that there are on communities. Part of uh doing this is uh um looking at some foundational elements of um how we make decisions around our streets, and so there are a handful of components that um come together to form complete green streets. Values and modal hierarchy are things that we've previously presented to you. Uh we had a survey that just closed, and we'll give you a little bit of a update on that, um where we talked about these two topics. Um the street typology is where we are today. That's gonna be the primary focus, and we're gonna be talking about um, you know, several things as we go through further developing the street typology, um from a description of the different types of streets, how they can be applied, the parameters for each one, um what the different priorities may be. Tonight, just gonna talk a little bit about a reminder of what the street typology is, what the function is, and show you the preliminary types that we have. We're not gonna get really into the weeds on um parameters and priorities um just yet. And then we'll be um continuing to work on modal uh priority networks and area overlays, which can adjust those parameters and priorities within each individual street type, and we'll give you a brief update on that and then circle back to it. Um so with that, we're gonna jump into the engagement update. We had just a few slides to give you a kind of a high-level look at what uh where things are right now and some summary event at the end.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. Um before we jump into the engagement activities, I just wanted to make you all aware that and I think we uh presented this the other time um too, is that, you know, COVID has, COVID along with the economy has really just disrupted engagement significantly, and so we really had to think um carefully about what we might do to get some meaningful engagement as we do um this Let's Talk Streets slash Complete Green Streets project, and, you know, so what we decided to do is we really uh wanted to focus on hitting, you know, getting in front of some groups that are very diverse. Hitting, you know, getting in front of some groups that are very diverse um and representative of what one might hear. On the on this these issues. So we kind of went for the small but mighty groups. And so when we talk about our folks focused engagement, that's where we went. And then, of course, the survey and doing a survey has really played well. In the covid environment. But you, but what happened with the survey, which you'll see is that it tends to be sort of um, you know, people who are used to sort of giving feedback. In this way is what what happened. So it's not the survey is representative of one demographic of the population. But it doesn't really represent like the different kinds of stakeholders that are in the community. So we had to really think carefully. About how we did that. And I I think with um the work that we did. Um, for this project, we were able to accomplish it, but I just want to remind you that it still continues to be a challenge to try to get in front of people and and get their attention in the way that we want. Um, but we did with the groups that we did get in front of, we did get some great information um that was collected, not only by Equity by Design, but also by Tool when they did a survey with people for disabilities. So. Um, in a nutshell, with the survey that we put out there and we had it out there um for quite some uh time, we received five hundred and twenty-seven responses. We just closed the survey. Um, again, participation disproportionately white, um higher income and older um compared to Madison's overall population. Um, with the focused engagement, we went into some particular neighborhoods um that were gathering and and. We were learning might be really interested in this topic. So we went over to Darbo. We also worked with Just Dane where there was a really nice uh diverse and robust group of. Individuals that we were able to talk to there. And then we also went to Luna's Black Party where there was a real heavy. Latino and Hispanic um population that we were able to get in front of and. You know, we really uh used the questions from the survey. We put that in front of the community to really try to understand. Um. What their concerns were and what their ideas were, especially when we talk about values and trade-offs and what they're willing to do. Um, and then last but not least, we also were able uh through tool able to do a survey for people with disabilities and they were able to um garner sixty total responses. Um, with roughly half being people with mobility disabilities and with most reporting their race as white. Next slide. Um, in terms of what we learned um from a values perspective and getting that on the survey. So, you know, the first phase was really talking about like. Can we get the community to agree to a set of values? And the reason we believe values are really important is that when we really push. Uh, for making changes, no one loves change. I haven't met someone who's like, yeah, bring me change. I I can't wait to feel all the pain points of what you're gonna do to change. My new, you know, what I'm used to doing every day. And so values are a great way to get people to come together, because if we can get people to focus on the values, then they're more willing to let go. Um, and be more willing to come to center. On some changes that might make them feel uncomfortable. Um, because they know it's based on a greater good. So that was really part of our strategy. So those values that we put up um for people to respond to were putting people first. Which prioritizes safety, comfort and well-being and de-emphasizes speed. We had seventy-eight percent agree in the survey. Um, that they agree to putting people first. Um, and we had strong support in our focused engagement and as well as the survey for people with disabilities. So this is really good. Things to learn and um have come from from this engagement process. The next one was supporting community, which is creating safe and welcoming places and emphasizing short trips and access to local destinations. Again, in the survey, eighty-six percent agreed with that. And then with fostering sustainability, promoting walking and biking and transit and use of streets to expand the urban tree canopy and clean stormwater. Again, we had eighty-seven percent agree. And then last but not least, centering equity, um engage inclusively, provide access to opportunities, prioritize and support the needs of historically underserved people based on race, culture, age, income and gender. We had eighty-two percent agree and we had eleven percent who said live with it. And it's really important to note that we. It's important to ask people if they can live with it, because that's another part of this equation is that people might feel there it offers them an opportunity to express their discomfort. But again, because they know that there's. Focusing on these values, they're willing to, you know, give up some things for the benefit of the greater good. Next slide. So in terms of the modal hierarchy and um what we asked uh in terms of getting a response in terms, what do they think about this modal hierarchy in terms of the survey results? We had fifty percent who said yes, and I strongly support it. And then again, we had thirty-three percent who said yes, and I could live with it. While only having no, I could not live with it yet seventeen percent. And this was. We had really strong focused engagement support on this as well. So this is really good news in that overall. Yeah, there are going to be people who are going to pick around it on the on the edges, but overall people strongly support it and they could live with it, which is what we ultimately want. I don't think anyone was in this to get a hundred percent. You know, um, you know, of of full agreement on anything that we would put out there, but the these are really good numbers. Um, from our perspective in terms of um the process that we did. Um, next slide. Adam, are you doing this?
I I can speak briefly to this and just say that, you know, we we had a lot of other questions in the survey and we didn't want to go through line by line. Uh, there will be. Uh, more uh, there was more information in Legisstar uh that you might have seen. Um, kind of hitting on some of the highlights, but one of the things we did want to circle back to and and just put a a highlighter on here. Is the general agreement with um one of the very pointed things that relates not only to complete green streets, but also to vision zero and a lot of other things where we're trying to increase the safety on our roadways. Is the general agreeance uh agreement amongst people to um to drive a little bit slower in order to increase safety. And so we very intentionally put a few different. Questions up here and you can see um the level of agreement. Declines a little bit as we say, as we go slower and slower and slower, but that first one about um being willing to. Accept lower speed limits in order to increase safety was um, you know, eighty-one and a half percent is a really good uh positive. Um, level of support for that statement. And I'll say we we framed this question by talking about the um. Influence of speed on survivability. So we put some statistics up there saying if you as a pedestrian or are hit by a car at this speed, here's your chances of survival versus at that speed and so forth. So we provided a little bit of um education in there as well. Um, so we were happy to see that that was um the results that we were getting there. Um, and you know, just as we. Present this information, you know, what we what we intended with this survey was to take some of what we learned in that first phase, some of what we presented to you about the values, the modal hierarchy and put that out there and test it with the community. And and have a variety of statements to see where people land on different um trade-offs and different perspectives and so forth. When we started the project, we sort of framed it as what if we change the way we think about streets? What if we sort of set a different um foundation for how we make decisions and how we think about the the purposes of streets, what we use them for, what our priorities are there and so forth. Um, and these bullets summarize the values. Um, uh, Annette read through these earlier and showed, you know, generally the strong level of support. But what we want to be thinking about here is what are the things that we are going to change? What are we willing to change? And and so. You know, putting people first is the safety over speed aspect. We saw strong support there. Prioritizing places and a- access um comes up as something really strong. Um. In in ways we need to change how we make some decisions. There was very strong support for multimodal and and green aspects to streets. Um, and then. You know, the the. Where we got a lot of nuance and a lot of the conversations was on the centering equity value, which again had strong support. Um, but uh and and Annette will talk a little bit more about this, but the implications um are both process related and outcome related and. Um, sort of have a lot of. Aspects that we need to be thinking about that are going to go beyond this particular project.
So what is really important for all of you to know is that um, you know, the the impact of inequity is both a historical as well as a present day sort of, you know. Topic that we're dealing with and it has many layers to it. And so we really, I think all of us need to really be thinking about, there's the impact and there's as well as the intersectionality of it. I think we all would love in this complete green streets model. To be able to have this one dimensional sort of view to it, like we're just gonna go in, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna think about equity and this, this is the way in which we're gonna do it. And the reality this is is it's much more complex than that. You know, when you're trying to intersect, putting people first, supporting the community, fostering sustainability and centering equity. Um, it 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 brings to bear a lot of different issues and depending on who you are, what identity you are, it plays out differently. And so that's one of the things that we. Of of this great project, you know, this is a part of it that really creates more questions necessarily than solutions. But we felt that, you know, we really as a team are gonna work hard to try to find a way to sort of, you know, navigate the middle. To the extent that we can, but we feel like it's really important for. You all, you know, as a TPPB and then even us as the consultants to understand that there is a a multi-dimensional um. Uh. Aspects to this that we have to just be aware of, and it's going to be really important that we sort of go slow to go fast as we think about that. And. If you can hit the next slide, Adam. Um, this is kind of our way of sort of depicting, you know, how how we look at inequity and equity and the complexness of it. So. You know, through this process, we've we under we're realizing that there are ripple effects and there are some ripple effects that we may be able to address, but there are many more that go beyond this project. And so. There's the complete green streets and what it is specifically designed to do, which is looking, you know, like trying to create this hierarchy. Trying to use values as a way to center um the decisions that get made. But then there's also another layer of layer of this, which is, you know, what does the Department of Transportation um, you know, control? And have the ability to do that isn't embedded within complete green streets, but is an equity. Uh, uh, but has equity uh components to it. And then the next layer out is really the city and the city's role and its impact. Um, to inequ- inequity. So then we're talking about, you know, parks and metro and. We're talking about, you know, fines and fees and we're talking about, you know, the other projects. You know, that other areas of the city work on that may not necess that impact what happens. Um, you know, at a street level, but not necessarily in the same way. And then, of course, all of this is embedded, of course, with the bigger picture, which is the sphere of systemic inequities. So, you know, it's really important that we understand that. When we're talking about inequity and when we talk about ways in which we can um address it. Our biggest concern is that doing this product, doing this particular initiative and talking about inequity. May leave many people dissatisfied, most importantly, the community, because when we say inequity. They have, they have higher expectations of course correcting than perhaps. Complete green streets can do itself. And so it's really important that, you know, the Department of Transportation and the city itself be thinking of ways in which they can amplify and, you know. The the ability to do some course correction in in equity. That may not necessarily reside uh just in complete green streets, if that makes sense. So we have to think about how can complete green streets be the first. Place where we can address this. But again, there are some other opportunities where other areas. Um, such as, you know, Department of Transportation um within the city and the city itself may have some other opportunities too, and those are all connected and those have ripple effects. We just need to be mindful of that.
Excellent. As and as we. You know, when we started this project out, complete streets can be a really technical topic. We can be talking about. Nuances and parameters and feet and inches here and there. Um. The intent of let's talk streets was to engage with the community in plain language, to speak in communities' language and to sort of step back a little bit and say, let's not just talk about, you know, parameters and details. Let's think about what are your values? And. You know, along with that comes a lot more broad input as well that shapes a lot of the the findings that we've gotten here. So. Um. You know, kind of not shouldn't shouldn't have been a surprise that we were going to get a little bit broader in the in in uh the input that we were hearing. Um, but that's kind of what leaves us here today. So this was the first part of the presentation. We have some more information to show you, but we did want to pause here and 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 pose a few questions to you as the board. Um, we presented um two things here that uh presented to you in the past and then got feedback in on the survey, and those are the value statements and the modal hierarchy. Um, we would appreciate any direction of the value statements, or if you feel like uh providing um, you know, approval of those. And I can flip back in the slides to that if you wish. Uh, and then also, uh, and perhaps a little bit more importantly is the modal hierarchy and trying to settle that discussion. I know there was some discussion the last time we were here with you about that. Um, generally speaking, we got, as Annette pointed out, some strong support for it um as we have it and would be open to any um thoughts or or input on that. And then finally, we're we're welcome to answer the questions or um facilitate a discussion on the um the input received overall. Again, we do have some more slides to actually show you the street typology, but we can pause here for a moment.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any? Comments, questions? What we've seen so far? Alder Foster, go ahead.
You and thanks for the presentation. Um. The the values are the for the putting people first, supporting community, fostering sustainability and centering equity. Is that right? Um, yeah, I might. I don't think I object to anything there. Um, maybe going into this, I was thinking it's really about. Safety and sustainability. Um. Centering equity makes a ton of sense and. I think the supporting community one does, although it's a little bit. I mean. Like longer trips still need to be accommodated, obviously, but I guess that'll just come out in the wash. So I I mean. I guess it just talks about creating safe and welcoming places. So seems. Seems good. Um. I guess the the one word in the in the first one, comfort, you know, we like. We've used that in sort of bike advocacy world as well, and it's sort of a funny word because it means really different things to different people. Um, so I I mean, I think the whole thing that says the emphasize speed and convenience probably balances it out because sometimes people think comfort is about. Getting where they want to go without having to slow down or or stop. So um, yeah, I I think it all, I think it all resonates with me and it's like a decent um. Guiding values. On the uh modal hierarchy. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd be in the I can live with it category. Um, I don't, you didn't do any, you didn't put any variants out there for. Um. Feedback, is that right? You just put this one out there and said, yes, like what either like it live with it or you can't, right?
Um, that's right. Yeah, we we did have um. We did allow people to put in comments, especially when they said if they could not live with it. Um, we've not analyzed that in depth because as Annette said, the survey just closed. Um, that's certainly something we could look at, but. We figured that represents seventeen percent of the input. Um, so it may. Not shift your. Opinions too much on it is as far as how to interpret things.
The people that said I could live with it, they didn't um have an opportunity to give feedback or they did also.
I mean, everybody had an opportunity. If they had a comment, they could, if there was an opportunity for feedback. Um, and if I recall correctly. Uh, let's see, that might have been the one where. Um, let me just look real quick. We got ninety responses. So ninety people out of four hundred or five hundred people responded. Or or took the time to add some um comment. In addition to filling out the. Um, you know, so to Adam's point, ninety people. Uh, provided a comment and anybody, any of those five hundred and twenty-seven could have left. But only ninety did.
And you haven't had a good chance to kind of go through those to pull out any key themes or anything, yeah?
No, uh-uh, because it just closed.
Um, I mean, I I guess. It's still, I mean, I think I I gave a little bit of comment last time this came to us. Um, and like, you know, thinking about our current. Staff and policymakers, like I feel sort of comfortable and. And like, you know, thinking about our current staff and policymakers, like I feel sort of comfortable enough with it on the one hand. But I do, I, I think the whole like bus bike thing has the potential, like we adopt this and then three years or five years from now, I can imagine it getting interpreted in a way that wouldn't maybe feel great. So I guess I'm kind of curious what, what some of the comments were that were received and maybe give a qualified support for this one. And I guess still feel like maybe putting bus and bike on the same plane like some of the other, um, communities we saw that, uh, could help avoid some of the potential interpretations, um, from other folks in the future would be my comment.
All right, Alder Harrington McKinney, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few comments. Number one is that we all agree that there would be trade-offs. And so, um, we're understanding that question of could you live with it? I was very pleased with, um, the direction that, uh, this is going and with those four guiding questions. And the thing that, these are the areas that really caught my attention. When you started your presentation, uh, with, um, the impact of inequities is very complex, true. And it says, um, what you identify yourself as, so true. And, um, it really, uh, honed into me when you talked about the sphere of systemic inequities being at the top. And there's a sense of getting straight to the answer. And what you brought out, and I really want, you know, people to hear that, Annette, what you brought out is that you cannot get straight to the top with an issue. And so many times we as policymakers wanna just take the issue and go straight to the top. And when you're really talking about the sphere of systemic, uh, of systemic inequities, you cannot get to the top straight like that. And, uh, and, and when you're looking at the city's role and the impact on inequities. And so, so this really opens the conversation up. Uh, it brings to the forefront people who may not be giving their input, but it is certainly, uh, it is certainly a way to bring into the conversation those who says that this is too complex for me and I'm just not, uh, giving any input at all. And so I like the direction that you're going. And absolutely, I would also, as Alder Foster said, would like to, uh, to see the comments that, you know, people took time to, to write in. But I'm very comfortable with the direction, uh, that you're going. If there is a uneasiness, you've done your job because that's what it's supposed to be. But really, when we're looking at the sphere of systemic inequities, for us to really take this as a consideration and, and thank you, I'm, I'm really, pleased with the direction that you're going on complete.
All right, thank you. Are there any more, um, questions or comments at this point before we continue? All right, seeing none, um, please continue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, um, guidance. That's helpful for us to, uh, have a general sense we're heading in the right direction as we continue because things begin to build upon each other and, um, knowing that is, is really, um, helps us to, to continue to proceed forward confidently. So at this point, I want to present, uh, where we are with the typology and give a little bit of context about what the typology is and, and what the purpose of it is. Anytime we go in to design a street, we make a series of choices, a series of decisions about how we allocate the space, what we put in that cross section, um, how we make trade-offs whenever we can't fit everything in there. And as I mentioned earlier, the purpose of this project is to help to guide those decisions, to streamline things a little bit. The typology, um, is a way for us to categorize different types of streets, um, to, to serve as starting points for how we make those decisions. And so if we look at streets, um, we can divide it into a series of sections or a series of zones. And if I can find my cursor, I will click to the next one. There we go. And, and I'll talk just briefly about those. Uh, one is the pedestrian zone and this is kind of simply defined as the sidewalk. And at least a portion of the terrace area, the, whether it be grassy with trees or have benches or, or bike racks or whatever, but some, um, form of space that separates the main pedestrian walkway from the roadway is important. Uh, we can then define a zone as the travel way. This could be where we have, uh, bus lanes, where we have bikeways, our drive lanes and so forth. And then finally, there's the space that's left over. We're, we're calling it here the flex zone. This can be, um, it can include bus shelters, it can include green infrastructure, it can include, um, tree canopy and it can include on-street parking. The way that we decide what goes where and which of those is more important in what situation, that's where the job of the typology really comes in. Uh, when we decide how much space should we allocate to the pedestrian zone versus the travel way? That's where the typology is going to help us make some of those decisions. When we, uh, decide how wide the sidewalk needs to be or what type of bikeway, again, that's, that's where the typology can be sort of a shortcut to beginning, um, the, the negotiations for figuring out what goes into the street design. So we will ultimately have priorities associated with these things. We will have some parameters associated with these saying, you know, this type of street, the sidewalk should be at least eight feet wide, preferably twelve feet wide or something along those lines can eventually become part of the typology. So what I'll present to you now is an overview and then I will relatively quickly go through the types. Again, if you had a chance to look at the PDF that was uploaded into Legisstar, you've, uh, maybe seen some of this information already. Uh, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions. We identified through looking at different, um, existing types of streets in Madison, through looking at the Imagine Madison Plan for the Future and looking at, um, the existing and planned bike network, looking at coordination with the Metro redesign, came up with ten types of streets that we feel like provide a good set, uh, categorization of where we are and where we're going in the future. I'll first off point out to say that the names are completely negotiable at this point. So if one of those phrases rubs you the wrong way, we can certainly change that. It's just meant to give a little bit of a explanation as to what the type of street is. You'll see that context, if you look left to right, there's sort of a variation there. The color coding sort of helps to indicate that a little bit. It's not very rigidly defined. Uh, we, we realized in looking through this that if we tried to put very strong divisions in context, we ended up with way too many types of streets. In some communities, we can clearly say there are two or three types of context. In Madison, it's a little bit more, um, of a, of a gradient between the types of, of areas within the city. And then I'll finally point out that this is intended to be aspirational. So we're looking at types of streets that we want to have. It's not necessarily just what we have today. So as you can see, there are, um, ten different colored boxes on here. They indicate streets toward the top are the more major streets, your arterials. The streets at the bottom are more of local streets. And we've identified streets that, uh, the ones with the asterisk next to them. Uh, we may not map all of those out. We're not gonna map out every neighborhood street. Those are kind of obvious. We won't necessarily map out every, um, one of the mixed-use neighborhood streets either, uh, because those are kind of more the local level streets. The focus is really on collectors and arterials. But that said, there will be some places where it makes sense to identify a particular type of street, just so it's clear what the intent is. This is the same diagram, but, but just zooming in a little bit to show some examples of the types of streets to help me, um, explain a little bit about the differences. So in the top left is the urban avenue. This is the more mixed-use, dense development, major roadways like East Washington, um, the, the more close-in portion, um, South Park Street. And again, going back to that aspirational thing, maybe parts of South Gammon, West Town, where that, all the, you know, future mixed-use development activity center is identified, that could be an appropriate use for that type of street. You'll go to the right, you can see the Boulevard and ultimately the Parkway are different sorts of contexts, maybe lower density development, uh, maybe less development with the Parkway, um, example. And again, we're talking about development that's really fronts the right-of-way. John Nolan obviously passes by downtown, but it doesn't have that sort of, um, sidewalk interaction that you might have on East Wash or, or, um, streets along those lines. Um, as you go down that, that row of mixed-use connector, Neighborhood Main Street and Neighborhood Connector, that's sort of the second tier of roadways perhaps. It's not the most major conduits in the city, but they are some really important corridors. I'll point out the Neighborhood Main Street. Those are places that, um, are very iconic within their neighborhoods. People often think of Willie Street and Monroe and, um, and Atwood and, and, um, you know, maybe some portions of Regent is being places. And again, getting into the aspirational aspect, there are some real areas of opportunity for portions of Fair Oaks and, um, some existing portions of Regent to perhaps, um, grow up a little bit more into that Neighborhood Main Street type of, um, of setting. The row below that, the neighborhood streets, we sort of differentiated a more hardscape versus softscape type of neighborhood street. Um, and then finally at the bottom are streets where we are going to do something different. These may not have clear delineations between places to drive and bike and walk. They, uh, may be uniquely designed in every instance. The civic space is a good example of that. That's probably the one that has some of the broadest variation in there. MLK Boulevard looks very different than King Street, but in a lot of ways, they function often like civic spaces. They're places we often will close down to motor vehicle traffic. We do things there that are unique and different than we would do on other streets like, you know, West Dayton entering downtown or so forth. So just to step through these quickly and show some images, um, the images in the bottom of each of these slides are taken from other communities and their Complete Streets plan to give you a sense of how, um, similar types of streets, uh, street types have been used in those places and what that could look like. Um, and you can see some of the context, um, description and things like the functional classification and the targets being listed at the top. Uh, we've, we've made an intent to, to provide some descriptive text to kind of, um, convey the feel of this type of street. Uh, but the examples in the top left are really important as well to kind of give you a sense of where are we thinking about. So you can see in the cross-section of these, this is an ideal cross-section. This is if we had the space, what would we put in there? Uh, this hasn't yet gotten to trade-offs. Um, so that's the next step to, um, to work into these. Uh, but you can see spaces for BRT. Uh, this is looking at having a center running, uh, BRT with, um, the BRT stops in the median, having separated bike lanes on the outside of the street, having a hard terrace with things like wayfinding, uh, bike share station. Perhaps Sidewalk Cafe could fit in here and, and places for people to walk. This is maybe not going to be the place with the most sidewalk cafe activity because it is a major roadway conveying a lot of traffic. But there's space there for that urban, um, urban life to exist. The Boulevard is a similar type of street in terms of the amount of traffic it's conveying and sort of the intensity of it, but it's getting into perhaps a little bit of a lower density type of environment. You may not have quite as much foot traffic sidewalk activity. Yes, you probably will have bike share stations, maybe the odd sidewalk cafe here and there, but it probably won't be the same degree of intensity. The traffic might be moving a little bit faster, but again, we want to look at having those lower speeds for pedestrian safety, um, present there. So a portion of East Washington past Starkweather Creek might be an example here. Portions of Mineral Point, Whitney Way, Cottage Grove, when you get out past Stoughton Road could all be examples of a Boulevard. You'll see here again, we have space for transit. This is not necessarily a transit-only lane, but it could be. And the bikeway just in this example is accomplished through a side path. We identified this having a separated space for people walking and people biking and more of a, a little bit of an ideal situation if we have the space. Again, with sidewalks on both sides, but this is just one way that this could play out. You could have a bikeway on both sides. Parkway, um, you know, John Nolan is a good example of this. Seminole Highway could be a Parkway as well. So this is a place where we have a lot of variation in terms of the intensity of the street and this is getting more into, um, what are some of the design choices that are made? Separated space for people biking is very important on these streets. Probably less of an emphasis on having a dedicated transit way just because of where these streets are located in relationship to the BRT network and the high-frequency transit network. Jumping now a little bit to mixed-use connector streets, um, these are, right now, I'd say your downtown one-way streets are what that, in this type of category. Maybe there's an opportunity for other streets to fall into this in the future as some of the, uh, new mixed-use developments happen. Currently, right now, this is identified as two lanes in one direction to sort of give some guidance on streets like Basset and Broome and the Auto Loop. Uh, but this could be made into more of a two-way type of, um, of, of street type if that was desired. The Neighborhood Main Street, again, this is some of the examples I talked about earlier, like Willie Street, Monroe. These are places that are really destinations, probably a lot of sidewalk activity. They are, all of these are very highly constrained corridors, however. They have, um, most of these have four lanes of through traffic, relatively narrow terrace and sidewalk space. There's a lot of demand for a very small amount of space. And so in here, we're starting to look at some, some really, some serious trade-offs. In this graphic, we're illustrating one travel lane in each direction. Uh, this would be a change for some of these streets. Uh, but it would prioritize having space for a bikeway and having space for on-street parking to support the small businesses that are there on those streets. It would require making some, um, changes potentially to, uh, putting some of the car traffic, some of the through traffic on some of the other corridors. As an example, I think this is still compatible with two lanes per direction, but I wanted to kind of point that out as here's a place where we might get into some of the, the trade-offs and some of the rub a little bit. The Neighborhood Connectors, these are very common streets around the city. Watts Road, North Thompson, Milwaukee, Gorham, uh, Schrader. These convey different amounts of traffic. They tend to go through slightly more residential areas. There can be some commercial along them. You know, one to two lanes per direction. They can have medians or center turn lanes. Um, and then now we're dropping in to the even, uh, lower speed, um, streets, the more local streets. Mixed-use neighborhood streets, uh, we, we're intentionally calling it mixed-use neighborhood instead of downtown neighborhood because we see a lot of opportunities for these outside of the downtown area. Some of the internal streets in future mixed-use developments. One block either side of East Wash there through the Isthmus, you can kind of picture maybe some of these streets, um, there next to, you know, the Sylvie where that is currently is, is kind of, looks like this. It has hard terraces, um, lots of bike racks, um, on it and so forth. Twenty mile per hour target speed. I think I clicked backwards accidentally. Sorry about that. Neighborhood streets are pretty, um, uh, self-explanatory. Um, we see there being an overlay of both the Neighborhood Street and the mixed-use Neighborhood Streets, um, of Bike Boulevard. And I can talk a little bit more about that in a second and what that could look like. And you'll notice on these, we have, um, biking sort of identified i- i- how it might fit in these different types of streets. And that's relative to the context and the anticipated speed and volumes of traffic that you might see on these streets. Civic space I mentioned is being one that might have just a lot of fluctuation in terms of how we approach these streets. They could be fully shared space. They could be flush streets without curb and gutter. Right now, we don't have, um, I don't believe we have any flush streets. We have a lot of streets though where there is curb and gutter, but we close it down sometimes to through traffic. You know, there's different, uh, different, uh, parameter or sorry, different right-of-way widths, as I mentioned earlier. MLK being very different than a lot of the downtown diagonal streets and the Capitol Square, all obviously being, um, its own unique, uh, animal. But Saturday morning farmer's markets are closed down, um, the, the weekday farmer's market on MLK, some of the, the various outdoor concerts and so forth are examples of that. And kind of showing some graphics here that, that do a few different things in terms of the edge of the roadway. They don't necessarily need to be these sort of meandering roadway, um, things like this, but, uh, just kind of showing a few examples of how it's been done in other places. And then finally, the getting down to the neighborhood shared street. And this is a place where you really truly have, um, all the modes using one space. Uh, the, the Dutch Wunorf is a good, um, go-by if anyone's ever seen that example in the Netherlands of, of how they treat some of these neighborhood streets. And Wunorf literally translates into living, uh, living straight, living street or living space, um, something along those lines. So this would be for very, um, compact neighborhoods, very low speeds, uh, would be the ideal there. So that's a brief overview. Um, I probably talked for a little bit longer than I wanted to there, but wanted to kind of just describe a little bit of our thought process and, and how these, how we're seeing these look. And, and kind of the, some of the applications that we could imagine for some of these streets. And, and, you know, some of these may be a little bit surprising, some of these examples we showed. And we kind of did that a little bit to, to see what your reaction would be and talk a little bit about, um, the intent for how these, um, aspirationally, how these streets could play out in the future. So that's the, the So that's the, the end of where we are, with the exception of I've got a couple of next steps I can talk about, but on the typology, that's the end of the the section. And the questions really are whether this covers all the bases, if we're missing anything. And then, you know, if you have, this is one of the things I really enjoy, actually, is is throw us a, a difficult example a street that you're not sure where it would fit, and it's, I mean, I'd be able to give you an answer, but it's a good way for us to sort of test this to see how well this works or if there are any gaps that might be remaining in it. And I'll circle back to this a second, but just to kind of wrap up, so I can be done speaking. Quick overview of where we are with the modal networks and the overlays. We talked about the modal networks with you in the past. As we were going through developing all this out, we realized it would be really helpful for us to get the typology assembled and get that to you and get some feedback as we continue to develop our definitions and mapping of the modal networks. We are currently in the process of mapping these and be working with staff to kind of make sure that we're on the right page, clean it up and so forth before we come back to you about it. But essentially, the Transit Priority Network is based on the BRT and then the fifteen-minute high-frequency network identified in the Metro Ridership, or sorry, Metro Redesign Ridership concept. That could evolve as that plan is finalized. The Bike Priority Network is based on the primary bikeways, and we've, we're putting in some additions to close some key gaps that we're seeing. But the, the purpose there is really to identify connections to the major networks, or sorry, major neighborhoods across the city. So we're not, so we're connecting across all major barriers and so forth. And I mentioned earlier the Bike Boulevard thing, and, and, and this is a good example of how these networks would work. When we have a modal network overlapping different street types, that might highlight, here's a place for a Bike Boulevard, or here's a place where we need to increase the priority of the space allocated for the bikeway, things along those lines. We also are identifying high-traffic streets. This won't necessarily be a network as much as it is a series of corridors. And this is in recognition of the fact that we have a lot of streets with a lot of traffic volume on them. We can't necessarily eliminate that, that, that traffic in one fell swoop. We need to manage it. We need to accommodate it at this point in time. Not necessarily prioritize driving at high speeds, but recognizing that that traffic is there and we need to address it. And I think, you know, in keeping with other goals, if we can reduce traffic volumes over time regionally, then we can start to allocate less space to motor vehicle traffic on those higher-traffic streets, get more balance on them. We're working through some questions here about what do we do when these overlap and what exactly does it mean for each street type? But that's an update of how that's playing out. And then I'll say, just as a reminder, we have a green infrastructure priority overlay that we're going to be developing, a canopy priority overlay, and both of those will play out to that flex space I talked about earlier, the extra terrace width versus on-street parking and what we do with those areas. And then we also have been talking about an overlay to specifically call out areas where there have been some past or ongoing inequities that could be used to adjust some of the priorities within the street types. And, you know, this again is a very complex concept and, and, and question that we're working through as we work through this whole sphere of the challenge that Annette outlined previously. So, you know, our next steps are to continue to refine this model and build out those, those priority networks and, and overlays, review those with staff, put a little bit more meat on the bones, and then come back and share that with you again. So that's the end of it. I will come back and just show you these questions again, and our big questions for you are just, does the typology make sense generally? Are there questions about it? Does it cover the basis? Is there anything we're missing? This is something we're continuing to work on. We need to continue building it out. But we'd love to get any sort of feedback on, is this heading in the right direction? Is there any major gap or flaw? You know, that sort of thing. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, Adam. The presentation, and it feels like we're on a, on a good track to me. Could you maybe pull up one of the kind of busier? Yeah, yeah, maybe one of like the big, the real big ones. Like, yeah, that'll work probably. So a couple of things. One, I think it'd be worth TPPB having a conversation about thirty miles per hour versus twenty-five. I know, I think even some of the ones you might have on here as examples, yeah, like Cottage Grove past Stoughton or East Wash past Starkweather. I mean, I think there were some specific conversations, even the Transportation Commission recently about, you know, should we, should we go from twenty-five up to thirty in those areas? I know there's some, you know, traffic engineering considerations for it, but knowing what we know about speed, et cetera. I think that's worth a conversation before we kind of memorialize that. I mean, maybe, maybe we should stick with twenty-five for target speeds on these as well. So that's one comment. Another is in the typical features section, I mean, I think in, in reality, the biggest gaps in my perspective are generally around sort of, you know, how we're using the right-of-way is, is often around the bike facility. I mean, I think we have a pretty, pretty solid pedestrian network generally, you know, sort of crossing the streets aside. We don't have a ton of gaps in our sidewalk network. It's generally pretty good. But I saw that, like, it seemed like in most of them, there wasn't, there was really no call out for the bike facility in the typical features. And, and yet, most of them do lead with like how many lanes for car travel, right? So two to three lanes per direction, like that's the starting, the first bullet in here. And it doesn't really, like in the photos, you can see some separated bike facilities, but I think, you know, that's going to be our shape. If this is aspirational, and if, if, I mean, my hope is that this will help us get some clarity around what, what those priorities are, you know, consistent with our modal hierarchy. If that's true, then I, you know, I think we should consider maybe not starting with some assumptions around how many lanes of car travel and also putting something in there like separated bike facilities. I mean, certainly if we're talking about higher speed limits, if we know these are going to be, you know, pretty high-volume motor vehicle, I think we can make some general assumptions that this, you know, a typical feature in this will need to be separated bike facilities. And then I think it's like in one of the neighborhood ones, you have bike lanes, so I think that was one of the first places I, I saw it kind of referenced. So maybe just extending that out so that each of them, you know, most of them have something about sidewalks, either kind of standard versus wider, where there's more pedestrian activity. I think if we maybe try to make mention of the, the, you know, normal expected bike facility in each, I think that could help a lot. I really like the concept that you shared at the end around the high-traffic streets. I think that's going to be, it's, it's like a helpful just reality, just like a very narrow right-of-way or something else. I think that's a good, almost like an overlay where here's our aspirations, but we can still recognize, you know, that this is sort of the reality, so we may not be able to get what we would, what, what the typal, typologies would, would normally call for. I think that's a good, good feature to continue to explore. And I think the only other comment I had was, I didn't see, oh, actually, on this one, I do see it, the, the benches. I think in any, in any place where we're thinking of it more as like higher pedestrian activity or just more, you know, general life, et cetera, that's a really good one to call out because I think it's, it's when we're dealing with flex space and how much space for flex space. I think seated benches in particular are just a really important pedestrian amenity that often go, that are overlooked. So I think calling it out and, and maybe a couple of the other typologies would be useful as well. Thanks for, again, for the presentation.
All right, Alder Figurula Cole, please, go ahead.
Hello, and thank you for the presentation. I was in another meeting, so I started kind of in the middle of this conversation. But as usual, I mean, the, the graphics here really are very they're, they're really excellent to, to help us get, get us a clear vision of where we're going. My only question really is on regards to what are the next steps? I mean, so I know the, the last time that, that you guys came to this meeting, you presented, we talked about the priorities and you presented some other examples of other cities. And now we are, you know, that, we, I, I get it, we are far, farther ahead from that, and we have gotten so many perspectives from, from, from stakeholders. What, what are the next steps on this? I mean, when you said that we define a priority criteria, how does that work on this process?
The, one of the steps that we're ongoing working on right now is to identify a those modal priority networks, which were a, an element of our scope of work from the beginning of the project. So what, where are the streets that need to have transit priority and where are the streets that need to have bike priority? Again, that's not to say other streets won't also have bike priority, but it's, you know, which ones are, are those that have the, you know, the extra emphasis on them? Once we have that established, we will also begin mapping these street types to say, here is exactly which streets each of these apply to. So for every collector in arterial street, we will have those identified. We will, around the same time, go through an exercise of identifying a series of, of what are the elements? And if you saw the slide at the beginning where I had the overlay of the sidewalk area and the flex zone and all of those pieces, identifying those various elements and for each of the street types, figuring out what is the top priority. So for example, a Neighborhood Main Street, maintaining that pedestrian width would be a high priority because there's a lot of, you know, if you think about, again, Monroe or Willie, there's a lot of businesses. So we need to make sure we have good pedestrian space there, at least enough for people to walk comfortably and preferably getting more so that we can have space for benches or for potentially sidewalk cafes. Parking is going to be a higher priority on that street probably as well. Where the, the trade offs might be, it might be taking away a lane of motor vehicle traffic. So we'll start identifying just sort of those, those relative priorities between those different pieces. And then one of the later steps will be to identify what are those sort of minimum widths for sidewalks and so forth that should be included for each one of these street types. So it, it ends up with a, you know, for each of the types of street, what are the priorities and what are the parameters? And then we have those mapped. So if you go into work on a project on, you know, such and such street, you know, you can see from the map, here's the street type. And here are the priorities on it, and here the sort of minimum and preferred values for, you know, various design elements within the streets.
So I mean, I guess are we, are, what I'm looking at right now, is this already, is this where, if someone is working, if we're working on Monroe Street, then the engineer, engineers will come to this, to this information to make their determinations? Or are we in a, are you still presenting what your, your suggestions and recommendations? Like, I'm just, I just, you know, I mean, I'm so in support of everything that you guys are doing and the ambitions here and when it's plenty and all of that, but there's so many elements going on at the same time, and I'm, and I'm losing track of where we're going here. Like, it's just like, what is the roadmap for all these programs to, to come together? I'm, I'm, I'm starting to get lost, and I'm, one of my goals has been to communicate to my constituents as much as I can about this project. But it's really hard for me to conceptualize this. Some sort of, not, I, I'm not asking for a timeline with dates or anything like that, but just like, what are the next steps on this process? To get this moving. So is this, is this my, my, I mean, is this a recommendation or is this something that, what we are doing?
This, this is currently for this project, our preliminary recommendation, kind of trying to say, are we heading in the right direction? And then we will continue to develop more detailed recommendations for TPPB to ultimately approve. But I think a lot of your question, and Tom, I'm guessing this is why you have your hand up, is sort of beyond a little bit of, of this project that I know about and is maybe speaking to more, you know, holistically, various transportation initiatives. So I'll see if Tom or Renee want to answer.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try. I think what we like to do is, there are projects coming up, like for instance, John Nolan Drive. We'd also like Park Street to be in that list, not currently. And we'd like to, you know, what is that street supposed to be? And I'm I'm going to say that a lot of Madison residents or other residents might say that John Nolan Drive is just the quickest way to get downtown or to a Badger Game. But here, we would say, no, it's a Parkway Street. These are the main functions of Parkway Street. So this will guide our selection of a typical section. Similar thing for, for Park Street, you know, Park Street. Now, I put a caveat here because Park Street is technically US 151, so there's some whiz dot involvement. But, you know, what should Park Street be? Is it really, you know, the quickest way to get downtown or, or how does that, you know, relate to its, its surrounding? So I don't think it will be the end result on any of these street designs because there's always a lot of neighborhood interaction and neighbor, you know, and resident interaction. But it, it gives a starting point of what the character of the street should be and what perhaps should, how the street space should be prioritized. That's a really opaque answer. Maybe it's, I don't know if it helps or not.
So Tom, I mean, once this is, you know, the, 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 truly and, and they continue to do their reach and their program and their putting the concepts together, but I, I guess, again, what is the next step? I mean, is that something that the council approves these, these starting points? Is that something that your department says, this is my manual of recommended things that we can, that we use as part of our processes? You, you know, like a base, the foundation, the, the building blocks?
Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll provide a little bit of the origin. You know, Madison adopted the Transportation Plan, Madison in Motion, maybe four years ago, two thousand seventeen, and it gave, I'm going to say, probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred recommendation. But they were non-location specific, and so it would be difficult to take that transportation plan and apply it to a specific street. See what I'm saying? It, it basically said, these are all good things to aspire. And so what we'd like to do is, we'd like to get more specific. You know, I'm an east sider, and I think a good example is Milwaukee Street, East of So Row. You know, what should that road be like? And we just overlaid it. We overlaid it two years ago and, and it was just going to be an overlay and a restring. Well, there were some interventions and buffered enhanced bicycle facilities were quick. Something like this would, rather than intervening in the system, saying what should be done, you know, after it paved, we would start off saying, no, you know, this is important bicycle. I'm going to perhaps say, you know, there's been considerable discussion on, on Whitney Way and what should be, what's the appropriate facility on Whitney Way? And so this would help guide discussions like that. So that they wouldn't be one-off sessions, but they would be part of a systematic decision-making.
Thank you. I mean, again, I just, I, I, I love visuals and I think it makes it easier for, I mean, it makes it easier for me to communicate that with everybody else. And, you know, and this is, again, a lot of information coming and we're talking about it a lot. And I know that we're doing things, but it's hard for me to just have, you know, everything, I don't know, it is a little bit hard for me to, to help you communicate these messages when there are so many things going on at the same time. So if you can work on something that brings some of these elements together to make it easier for us to, to market them to our constituents, that would be great. But other than that, thank you, guys. These, these are very good. Thank you.
All right, Yang, did you have a response to Alder Figurula Cole's question or?
Yeah, I'm just trying to provide a bit more information, maybe, yeah, in addition to, you know, Tom's comment. Yeah, you know, you know, we, basically, this project really provides us a, a decision-making framework as Tom mentioned, you know, when we take our street projects. But I want to come, comment on that, you know, this will also interrelate with, you know, other initiatives. uh, interrelate with, uh, you know, other initiatives that's going on as other figure of commission. Uh, Vision Zero, uh, you know, twenty, twenty, twenty is plenty, for example. You know, as we, uh, uh, work on different projects, actually, I, I, I look at resources, even though we're not totally, you know, redo a street starting from scratch. But this, uh, uh, study will give us a great, good idea on, you know, where are the defense, uh, deficiencies, deficiencies are. Uh, you know, Tom used the radical example on which way. Uh, you know, for example, you know, uh, uh, this study will be able to tell us um, what we are lacking on which way and what should be priorities. So, you know, when we, uh, uh, look at how we, uh, programming Vision Zero and other programs, uh, we can really, uh, you know, have a clear guidance on where we, where we should focus on resources and what we should do. So just to try to, uh, kind of tie these things together. And I'm sorry for the kids in the background. Yeah, they are, they must be mad about something.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Yang.
All right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. I, um, yeah, I just wanted to hold up something that, um, Alder Figaro Cole said about about the need to kind of tie these things together to be able to, to kind of communicate them. Um, I think it's a really good and important point, and it's something I think maybe the, the policy board should have, um, kind of on its list of things to, to work through. So yeah, Vision Zero, Twenty is Twenty, Safe Streets, Madison, Complete Streets. Um, you know, I, as you ask those questions, like I could, I could attempt to sort of connect those dots like Tom and, and Yang did, but I think what you've highlighted is a need for us to do that a little bit more succinctly and intentionally. I think it's a really, really great point. I appreciate you raising it. Um, I would say briefly, from my perspective, that this initiative right here, Complete Streets is really about, I think, like what Tom said, of taking this high-level policy, like we, we have very clearly defined high-level policy goals related to transportation, right? We want to get away from driving. We want to move mode share. We want to focus on safety. And then we have every, all the individual street projects. And those street projects, historically, the, the approach, you know, from engineering is, okay, well, what's there today? We want to make any changes to it. And so like, kind of what's there today is, is sort of the starting point. And then let's hear from the neighbors. Let's maybe incorporate some of these aspirational elements and, and move it a little bit. But that starting point is whatever is there today. And I think what, what this is the opportunity is to set up a, actually more of a sort of standard foundation with those goals, um, with those aspirations at a, at a more specific level than what's in that very, very high-level plan. So that I think as Yang said, staff have really clear, not just direction, but honestly support. Because I think a, a lot of our, a lot of our staff gets all of this and, and, you know, it's left up to themselves, would, would love to put forward really, um, sort of different designs that maybe get us to those big picture policy goals faster. Um, but it's going to maybe be received with a lot of surprise from the public or from the neighborhoods. And so I think my, my belief is that this, we would adopt it as policy. This is something the common council should adopt and say, yep, we're on board with this. This is our, this is, this is how we want to manage things. That gives really clear guidance and support for staff so that they can really do the job that we're asking, which is implement, right? Let's, let's actually, let's be as progressive as we, as we're saying we want to be in those high-level ways. And this is how we can do it. So for me, that's what this project is, is, is bridging those things.
All right, Margaret, go ahead.
Yes, uh, first, yes, Alder Figaro Cole's questions are very well received here. They're ones that I constantly ask when we have these overlapping studies, um, and questions about how they relate to one another. And, uh, looking at this slide, uh, and the question, is there anything missing? And, um, you know, pardon me my cynicism, but my first, yes, there is something missing, which is point that Tom raised. What does the DOT have to say about this? What does the DOT have to say about this type of street classification? How does it fit with the existing rules, regulations, funding streams? You know? And uh, you know, I, I think that, um, many portions of this typology probably don't conflict with exit, you know, or aren't even on the map for existing DOT um, and federal regulations and funding categories, et cetera. Uh, but some of them are clearly in conflict. Like East Washington, east of, uh, Stark Weather. Uh, that's in the, I mean, that's Highway fifty, one fifty-one, right? And that is when I think of the reconstruction of Highway fifty-one and where it intersects with East Washington. Uh, and uh, fifty-one, one fifty-one and fifty-one, um. You know, they're talking about reconstructions that basically look like a freeway. Not Boulevard, uh, or however it was, you had them classified here. Park Street, too. Um, you know, we have to be clear that some of the, what's missing here, I think in part is an acknowledgement that some of these reclassifications are major changes for the way these streets might be used. And we did get a taste of this with uh, Whitney Way and the, you know, citing of, um, you know, potential citing of Bus Rapid Transit and the loss of parking spots, et cetera. But reconstruction of East Washington, um, it's going to be a huge issue. Uh, and it may be that we need to take it out on a bigger level in terms of, yes, reconsidering the classification of some of those streets and working with DOT to lose the federal highway designation. Um, and I don't know what that would mean for the funding stream. Um, but that to me is what, you know, um, sort of with the larger streets, the fastest. I mean, a target speed of thirty miles per hour for East Washington? Oh my goodness. Uh, where we have people doing eighty and a hundred at night? You know, yes, it would be nice to get it down to thirty. And there are huge equity issues there. Um, but how do we do that? You know, and who, who has to be at the table to do that? And, and yes, the neighborhoods have to be there, but I just think of all the time that, for example, uh, neighborhood associations that bordered on Highway fifty-one down by Flom Road and Buckeye Road and whatnot, all the time they spent saying, uh, going through a planning process for fifty-one only to be told by WISDOT. Yeah, we're not doing any of that. We can't do any of that. And, and I'm, don't think we should be wasting people's time that way unless we are committed to helping them push to bring these streets to that level. So that's what's missing.
All right, thank you. Um, are there any further, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Just quickly, maybe one way to address what Margaret was just posing is under that, um, kind of high-traffic overlay. You know, maybe we have, it's part of that, or we just have another one that's like state highway overlay, just to acknowledge and recognize that there, there are some different constraints or considerations on, on those.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, any additional comments, questions? All right, being done, um, thank you. You for the presentation. Thank you for the comments. All right, we will then move on to, um, what just our six, seven, five, seven, zero. Funding Division Staff Update on the South Madison Plan in October twenty twenty-two, final attachment to, of the Town of Madison.
Great, thank you. Um, gonna give a brief informational presentation on the plan and, uh, we've got a few discussion items at the end. Um, gonna focus mainly on transportation-related issues of the plan as well, but I have other maps if you'd like to discuss other things as well. So just a uh, quick, uh, reminder here, the study area, we're looking at the area south of Winger Creek, north of the Belt Line. Uh, east of Fish Hatchery Road and west of Lake Manona. Um, during the plan, uh, obviously COVID, uh, made us take about a year-long break. Uh, during that break, um, the team, uh, kind of retooled the focus of the plan. Uh, we heard some feedback from the community um, that this plan needed to be an action-oriented plan. Um, and so the, the team, uh, came up with, uh, three guiding principles. Um, anti-displacement, gentrification, meaning wealth building and opportunities to thrive. Those principles are, are used to evaluate, uh, the strategies and recommendations, uh, within the plan. Uh, and then the plan, uh, content kind of got, um, condensed, uh, into five different chapters, economic development, housing, land use, transportation and parks, equitable access and capacity building, and the Park Street corridor. The slide shows, uh, some of the top, uh, issues and concerns that we heard, uh, during our public, um, listening sessions. I've highlighted, uh, the ones that uh, relate to, uh, transportation and pedestrian and bicycles. Uh, so we heard that there needs to be improved bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, uh, creating, uh, some east-west, north-south bike routes, uh, extending the Cannonball Path, uh, generally improving connectivity, uh, between neighborhoods. Uh, the railroads and major rail, uh, road corridors, uh, act as barriers between those neighborhoods. And then, uh, finally, transit service, uh, more frequent transit service, uh, service for third-shift workers. So getting into kind of the, some of the mapping that we've done, um, and it relates to, uh, some of the recommendations. Uh, this map highlights, um, future street networks, uh, these, uh, recommendations on streets are, are taken from our focus area concepts, which I'll show in a little bit. Uh, but we're splitting the, uh, streets into two, two different, um, categories, one being priority street connections, the other secondary street connections. The priority street connections that are being highlighted are, um, the Buick Street Extension to Cypress Way north of the, the Village on Park or kind of through the current Village on Park, but, uh, the north building will be removed. Uh, North Avenue Extension, uh, west to Fish Hatchery Road. And then, uh, the extension of Perry Street over the Belt Line, uh, connecting both sides of Perry Street, connecting the neighborhoods to the north with the jobs to the south. And then the secondary street connections are ones that would occur, um, along with, uh, any redevelopment, um, to help, uh, aid in that development. But again, the streets in orange were seen as kind of critical street connections that need to be made uh, to help, uh, with connectivity within the neighborhoods. Uh, this next map is displaying a bicycle and pedestrian, uh, network. Uh, it's kind of busy, but it, it's showing, uh, existing, uh, off-street paths in blue, uh, proposed off-street network, uh, off-street paths in green. Um, and then existing and proposed bike lanes. Um, also showing some, uh, proposed locations for new bike share. Um, and then, uh, showing the sidewalk network, um, gaps in the sidewalk network. So the, kind of this, uh, orange color is gaps in the sidewalk network on both sides, and then the red, uh, would be gaps, uh, where you have sidewalk on one side of uh, the street. So, uh, just some highlights on this map, the, the plan is proposing, uh, the extension of Cannonball Path, which I believe is set to happen perhaps next year. Uh, also proposing, uh, off-street, uh, bike path connection at Dane Street, north of Penn Park into the Capital View Neighborhood uh, to help connect the Capital View Neighborhood, uh, to the west, to Penn Park a, across this rail corridor. Uh, and then, uh, something that came up, uh, when, um, a propos, development proposal for this, what we're terming the Olin Triangle came through was the desire for a connection, uh, to the Winger Street or the Winger, uh, Bike Path. So we're showing a connection. It's kind of hard to see with the text here, but a connection from Olin, um, along the railroad tracks up to, uh, the Wingers, Winger, uh, Bike Path. Uh, highlighting here some of the east-west and north-south connections the plan is trying to make. Um, this would be through On Street. Uh, it's, it's labeled as potentially streets for bike boulevards. So that Buick Street Connection, uh, plays an important role here, getting folks from to and from Lincoln Elementary School across Park Street into the neighborhoods to the east. And then a north-south connect, or connection from, uh, the Winger, uh, path. Um, along Fisher Street to the south, connect up with that Buick Street Extension. And then, uh, a proposed, uh, east-west connection from Fisher Street, uh, east, uh, all the way to Rimrock Road, um, through the Illini Energy Center. Again, that'll have to be something worked out with Dane County to see if, if that can come to fruition. But again, connecting kind of those neighborhoods to, um, Illini Center as well as, as to Olin Turbo Park. I mentioned the focus area concepts briefly before. Uh, we have three of them, three areas, uh, the Village on Park area, the Thorstad area, number two, and then the Perry and Anne Street Focus Area. Uh, and so these concepts are, you know, uh, going to be used as a blueprint for future development in if or when it occurs. Uh, so we're depicting that, um, Buick Street Extension to Cypress Way, uh, Fisher Street Extension, uh, to Badger Road, and then a Hughes Place Extension to that Fisher Street Extension. Uh, also showing some of the, uh, development that has been proposed for the Village on Park with the Urban Leaks Hub, uh, the associated, uh, parking structure that the CDA would build to the west of the hub. Um, and then, uh, some of the, the rest of this is kind of aspirational again. Uh, so a lot of this would not occur unless property owners, uh, wish to develop, but again, uh, it's being shown in the plan so that there is that blueprint, uh, if future development were to occur. Um, the Thorstad area, uh, again, we're showing that North Street Extension, uh, to Fish Hatchery Road. Um, we heard a lot of feedback from the community that there needs to be more opportunities for single-family residential or an occupied, single-family residential. Uh, we evaluated a number of places where that could potentially occur and potentially be feasible economically. Um, and, uh, it was decided that Thorstad, uh, offered uh, a potential opportunity to do that. Uh, it would require a significant investment from the city to make it occur, but, um, again, it was one of the top, uh, items that we heard, uh, during our, our community feedback sessions. Uh, this concept's also showing the Cannonball, uh, Extension from Fish Hatchery Road up to the creek. Um, as well as, uh, a potential expansion of High Fitz Park, that's a town park that will be coming to the city uh, at the end of October of twenty twenty-two. And the third concept, uh, is the Perry and Anne Street Concept. Uh, again, we're showing, the plan is showing, uh, an overpass of the Belt Line uh, to connect the neighborhoods to the north, to the jobs to the south. Um, we are aware that this would be a challenging connection since the grades of Perry Street on both sides are essentially at grade with the Belt Line. However, you know, there's a similar situation at County AB and, and twelve and eighteen where the, there's, uh, overpass, uh, planned to be built there. Where the there's uh overpass uh planned to be built there where the grades are essentially. At grade uh today, so um really feel like this is an important connection to connect people to jobs. Uh and then the rest of the the concept showing some potential for some. Uh employment along the Beltline and then transitioning uh into the neighborhood with some um multifamily residential. Uh have a few questions that we'd uh like to get feedback from the board on. Uh as well as anything else uh you saw in the plan. Um just want to get your thoughts on the proposed pedestrian bicycle routes, those east, west and north, south routes. Um thoughts on the proposed off-street connections uh from Dane Street to Sunstrom Street into the Capital View neighborhood? Uh and then any thoughts on the future street network? Um you know, where we're highlighting those critical street connections. Uh and then finally um any other general uh comments on the pedestrian bicycle network? Uh that's proposed in the plan. Uh with that, I think I'll cycle back to um kind of that first map. Or maybe I'll I'll leave it on this map for now um and see if there's any comments or questions.
All right, thank you. Um how much your question? Randy, go ahead, please.
Uh yes, you mentioned the extension of the Cannonball. I'm trying to get my bearings right now, looking at a Google map, but. It is, why would you not continue, or maybe there. Are there plans to continue to use the rail line? Is is that an active rail lines? You know, is that why you're suddenly revert and go to the north along the park?
I'm I might defer to my transportation uh engineer folks who may be on the call, but I believe it is still an active rail line. Um and. So yeah, I believe that's why it heads to the north there. I don't know, Tom, if you have.
Yeah, I'll give just a little bit of background. Um I if others are online, they can do it. Um. We we want to run adjacent to that rail line to connect this to the the Winger Path. However, you know, we have no real ability to um go on their right of way, and so much of our um. What we can do is really dictated by who we can negotiate. Um with to get right of way adjacent to the rail line, and so we've. Um I'm going to just say engineering and Renee um have been adeptly interacting with some of the adjacent landowners and. They're able um. Make that a large portion of that connection. You know, we don't have powers of eminent domain.
Right.
Anymore, so we really have to. Find willing sellers, and so I think they've uh they've done a good job.
So that rail line still continues what Fish Hatchery, and then it does that ends, or does it continue?
Right now, the path Cannonball goes to Fish Hatchery, and then it it kind of ends, and so the idea that uh. There's kind of an informal path on the um east side of Fish Hatchery that. That goes up, this would provide a perhaps a little bit more direct connection to the Winger Path rather than. Using sidewalk like like. Structures on.
Yeah, all right, so then, I mean, I'm assuming that there's no willingness on the railroad part to abandon that section in there. I'm I'm guessing that there's some rail traffic.
Yeah, we. We could spend another meeting on interacting with the railroad.
Now I now I have some experience as well.
Yeah, and so um we're interacting with adjacent property owners on land that is directly adjacent.
Right, my only my only point is, and I'm the only one outside of Madison area, Pittsburgh, and it was always nice to try and find a straight line in Madison. And I get in out of the on the Cannonball, and then I. You know, it it takes a lot of work to get further into downtown on my bicycle, so that's the only reason I ask.
Yeah, and I think it will get better. It's the the with that connection to the Winger Path, the Winger Path really kind of goes directly into the capital city. And um.
Yeah.
I think it'll be a nice smoother connection.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Um I I think Randy's question is point is a is a good one, and I understand the. For the challenges and why we're, you know, constructing the the way we're constructing it right now, but I guess I was also under the impression that we. Um but have an opportunity to also continue. Along, parallel along the rail at some point in the future, particularly looking at the Thorstad property and redevelopment there. So, I mean, I I look at these. Plans as the the place to put that aspiration and where we want to see stuff, even if there are near-term. Challenges, um especially since we started to to take these plans once they're adopted and then. Take elements and and put them in our official map. So I I mean, to me, I I was also expecting to see a a proposed future path that continues along there. Um I think that's exactly the kind of thing when we're looking at the Thorstad redevelopment site, for example, I mean, everybody should be counting on giving up a. Little slice of that right away along the railroad to accommodate that, and I think there's only. There's a little chunk in between, you know, where we're going to deviate off and that, but. I guess I wasn't under the impression that it is at least theoretically possible. Um. Uh you know, another thing to that same point, that I mean, that rail line is such a a major barrier, and I don't know if you can zoom in at all um on here, but at. Basically where um like Ridgewood Way ends. Um yeah, right there, like, I I mean. Again, that we should be at least on that something like this, I think we should be showing a connection, either, you know, running along the. The rail line to Fish Hatchery. Um oh, it looks like it actually is showing, so that's so that's good, right? So that's a like, that would be a new rail crossing right there. Um but at least it's shown on here, so that that is good to see. Um. Mike, Mike, I had I had a question on Park Street. Um was there discussion about? Bike accommodations on Park Street, and are we basically by, are we saying that's not going to happen, or? Cause there's um, I guess I'm very underwhelmed by the north, south connectivity, and I think everybody probably knows that, and um I don't. If we're not, if we're not showing it on Park Street. What's the plan for getting that?
So the the discussions we've had have revolved around trying to find a north, south route. Not on Park Street, given the amount of traffic on Park Street. Uh a- as well as everything else that's planned to go on with BRT. Um. So I guess we were, we were looking for a route off of Park Street. There's a desire to show. You know, again, for that aspirational aspect, to show it on Park Street. I think we're more than happy to accommodate that.
Is is Fisher Street expected to be, I mean, that's the only thing I really see, I guess. Is that supposed to be, everybody that lives in this area is going to make it to Fisher Street enough? Is that the idea?
Yeah, I mean, the folks on the west side, they could come over on Buick Street, that's a controlled intersection. And then up uh Fisher Street to the to the Winger Creek Path. Um. Yeah, trying to funnel folks to Fisher Street to get them north, south. But again, if Park Street is. More highly desired, we can. We can show something on Park Street as well.
I I guess what would be honestly, what would be helpful, and I mean, I've shared this on some other. Plans before, but it gets really like, there's so many colors on here. And it's really impossible to actually know what is the current bike network and what are we proposing? And I think the reality is, even, I mean, there's some nice proposals in here, but I'm not. It doesn't look to me like we're even with what's on here, that we're actually going to have good connectivity by bicycle to the south side. And we talk about centering equity, and to me, this is, this is something that we really have to focus on. I mean, this is, this is a like fifteen minute bike ride from downtown. But only if you're super, super brave or stupid. And I'm not convinced, like. I think it's important that we really push ourselves to show, like, what do we, what do we think is doable, and how do we think we're going to do it, and if there are some. Some real stretches, let's, let's make that clear, because I don't, I mean, yeah, the Cannonball extension will be. Nice, but honestly, that's going to be better for Pittsburgh folks and people come from that area. I don't, that's not going to be a real asset to South Park folks. So I would love to see, uh, here's our current state low-stress bike network. Here's, you know, in the next couple of years, what we think we can do for improvements, and here's our long-term vision of how we're actually going to have. Bike quality, low-stress bike connections for folks in this in this area. I think that'd be really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh Chris, you're up next, go ahead.
Thanks. Um so the one piece that jumps out to me is the low-density residential in the Thorstad area. Um. It just seems, I mean, this is in all likelihood going to be a BRT stop, or at least a high transit, high-capacity transit corridor. Um and and we've been asked to approve. Medium to high-density stuff way far out on the east side, under the pretense that it's going to be well-served by transit, so. Um it's not that I'm opposed to single-family near transit, but um. This is, it it's currently a industri- pretty industrial area, so it's not clear whose interests this is serving.
Yeah, so one of the reasons we chose this area, the proposed single-family residential, was it would not displace any. South Madison residents, potentially it would displace a few businesses. Um you know, the 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 very first guiding principle is anti-displacement gentrification. Um so we've got a lot of different. Things we're trying to the way here. Um you know, BRT is one of them, increased density is one of them, but then also the need for additional single-family residential. In the neighborhood for stability for community wealth building. Uh we've also heard a lot of comments from the community that they don't want. South Park Street to turn into East Washington as far as densities and heights. Um so we've tried to put some. Denser uses, I mean, it may not be to the level that we're all looking for along Park Street, but we're we're proposing. Um mixed-use. Five-story, I you know, we've got a height map that shows essentially five stories along Park Street until you get to Badger and Park. Or goes up to eight. Again, it's it's in conflict with, you know, the future BRT route. But it's also, you know, we're trying to show also what the community has told us that they would like to see, so. There is going to, that that push-pull is there, and you know, we're trying to accommodate all sides and. Essentially making no one happy.
What would higher density here displace? I'm just not wrapping my head around it.
So. It 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 wouldn't necessarily displace folks, um you know, in in this area. The this was the, so we all, we looked at putting single-family residential in. Uh kind of this area. Whereas that would potentially displace all of these apartment users as it was to redevelop. So we were looking for a location where, one, it could be built and wouldn't displace existing residents. Uh and because of the uses on the Thorstad site. You know, being largely light industrial, it's going to displace a couple of, two or three businesses versus people. Um so we could get, we could achieve, potentially achieve the goal of. Providing more single-family owner-occupied residential units within South Madison. And not do it displacing folks. Um you know, short of, uh i- in earlier concepts, we had a lot higher density shown here. Higher density multifamily residential. Uh and the community pretty much outright said we don't want that type of development. Um. You know, even though it is along the BRT, proposed BRT corridor. Um. So, you know, we're trying to address some of that density along, right along the corridor with some mixed-use. Um buildings and some some multifamily residential, but then quickly transition into that. Owner-occupied, single-family residential.
Okay, I I mean, clearly it's a complicated conversation, but. The notion that single family. I don't know, it 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 all seems backwards to me. I don't know, it the the notion that single family would displace a few businesses. That notion, I'm just not wrapping my head around, and also. The the traffic, the concerns about traffic on uh Park Street, which is supposed to be. High development, I would think a high-development corridor for high-capacity transit. Um. Like, I don't know, I guess.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, okay.
It 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 will be a point of contention as we go through the adoption process.
Okay.
Um we we totally expect that and get that. Um we're. Yeah, we're we're trying to, again, um please, everyone.
Mm-hmm.
But we, you know, it it's, it's a difficult feat.
Thanks.
All right, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a good segue. Um. It goes back to my point on our last agenda item about. Deciding what these roads, some of these roads really are and what they really can be realistically. South Park is a great example of that. Uh so a simple point about your map is it would be helpful. To see where uh BRT stations are planned, or you know, may be planned. Uh and add that on to, and and if not that, at least the bus stops, uh because some of these areas are. You know, they may have bus stop. The bus stops that are in need of, you know, that's pedestrian connectivity. Right, we need to make sure that they actually have that connectivity. We need to make sure that they are actually. Uh comfortable to use the all hours of the day. So just a just a comment, that's something to add into these maps.
Yep, we can definitely do that. Thank you.
Right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, this is just a an update, right? We're not actually being asked for recommendations at this stage yet.
Correct. Um yeah, just an informational, we'll be coming back in the month of November, December for BCC. Uh you know, recommendations and approval.
Yeah, so it, I mean, either at that time, or even if if possible, or you know, maybe DOT staff could bring. Something back um of of what I was asking for around the bike network component of this, it'd be great to. Dig into that before we're being asked to approve a a final version of it. Um and then I I wanted to second what Chris said about the single-family home component here. I mean, I was also. Shocked to hear what you're saying in terms of that was a clear ask and the and the pushback against high-density. Um. I think we need to be really, really thoughtful and careful, and I'm hundred percent sure staff, and a lot of conversations around this. But from a transportation planning perspective, which is, I think, what you're looking for from us. Makes no sense, and I mean, all all of the. Desperate attempts that we're talking about to try and and build more housing in Madison, like, you can't imagine. A better, more centrally located on BRT location than this. And I I I just agree, I don't, I mean, clearly it's not going to displace anybody, but even in terms of gentrification, like, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, if we can add a hundred homes here or a thousand homes here. The, you know, putting a hundred homes here, either they're a hundred percent subsidized. To keep them somehow affordable and 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 give them way to folks, or they're going to be way more expensive per unit than if it's higher density. So I just, I don't see how this helps at all, and honestly, it just feels like. I mean, it's the kind of feedback that we'd probably get from a lot of places around the city, though, from residents that don't want higher density because of what that looks like and feels like to them. That would maybe more normally get dismissed as, okay, yeah, that's. That's expected feedback, you know, write it off as nimbyism, but you know, here on this side of town, we're much more sensitive about. But, you know, here on this side of town, we're much more sensitive about respecting the feedback, and so now we're willing to actually show a concept. That I just think is a hundred percent inconsistent with our comp plan and is not gonna get us where we need to go in terms of transportation. So, I mean, yeah, we're building high-density stuff out on the suburbs, on the fringes that we can, we can't serve with transit. And here we are, here, willing to give up, uh, you know, just a ton of, of households. In order to have some single-family law, I don't, I don't see it, so I, I, I don't support this from a transportation planning perspective, the way it's shown right now.
I will mention too, we had a, a market study done. Um, and they looked at the amount of units that could be absorbed in South Madison over the next fifteen years. And their, their range was somewhere between nine hundred and two thousand units. Um, and these concept plans, the three concept plans all told together. Come in towards that higher number, that might even be over that two thousand units slightly, so. Um, again, that was done, um, this past March. Um, but just to give a sense of what, at least that market study at that time was saying. Uh, as far as the number of units that South Madison could.
What was the timeframe for that, that they thought it could?
Next, uh, ten to fifteen years, basically the timeframe of the, the planning horizon of the plan.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if you could share that, it'd be helpful, but I, I mean, a lot of the other areas that you're showing are requiring redevelopment. And are probably not super likely to happen in the next ten years, whereas this one, you know, being a basically super-ready site, it would be. Seems likely that it would be one of the first to go, um, and actually have potential to get redeveloped, so. I don't know, I, I, I'm skeptical of. That somehow if this were developed with high-density, that we would somehow max out the capacity and, and demand for housing, uh. On the south side of Madison, but maybe if you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the, so, um, when we had higher density on this site. It bumped up our no, it, it doubled our numbers, we were in the neighborhood of fourth, showing between these street plans, four thousand units. So, uh, whether. The market studies act or, you know, not, uh, just, just to give you an, an idea of. What's possible.
Yeah, maybe if you could share that, it'd be, it'd be helpful, but I, you know, as Chris said, we're, you know. We've been asked to, to approve and recommend identity stuff with, with poor transportation access. You know, I think we even recommended against recently, Plan Commission said, fine, just go for it. And, you know, we're, planning staff is, is recommending that we sacrifice neighborhood commercial space. Because that's the only place that we can redevelop for, for desperately needed new housing units. And we've got a, you know, a site right here that could. That could do everything we're looking for in the best possible spot, I don't, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I, I think you just need some more.
All right, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, just clarification, what exactly does it mean to say that, um. Uh, that South Madison could absorb X number of units? What does could mean in this context?
It, so if these areas were to redevelop, if, you know, if private development were to come in. And develop, um, there would be enough people to rent those units, I think that's what it means, could absorb. Those, that number of units, if somebody built them. They, they would be rented or purchased. Versus if you built, it, you know, if the, if the market says it could absorb two thousand and you built four thousand, you may have two thousand units sitting empty. And it wouldn't be.
Don't we have a dense, don't we have a deficit of like a thousand units per year? So, I guess this doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, so we have a deficit. The thing that's playing into this neighborhood is, again, there's major concerns over gentrification in neighborhoods. So if a developer comes in and builds two thousand units of house, market rate housing. The folks who live in this neighborhood won't be able to afford those units, so you're bringing in outside people. Gentrifying the neighborhood. Um, yes, I mean. Other, people may move from other places, but the, it's, you know. One of the key, key priorities of this plan is how we. Don't displace existing residents and gentrify the neighborhood. I don't know if I'm doing a great job of explaining that, but we're trying to be. Then, very sensitive to that, but because it's happening already, there's. There are developers and property managers buying up single-family homes, turning them into rental properties. Raising the rents or raising the bar as far as first and second month down payment and security deposit, that sort of thing. Causing folks to have to leave this neighborhood who've been there for, you know, ten, twenty years. Um, so we're trying to balance, again, trying to balance a lot of different things.
Yeah, I guess that was one of the reasons I was questioning that, because I do, I do see that. Happening, and that has been happening for. Uh, quite a while, um. And. There are things that we could do to. Make some of this, uh, you know, ma- whatever type of housing it is. Obviously, you should be making sure that a large proportion of it is affordable. Uh, to. Current Madisonians, um, and people who live in this adjac- you know, adjacent to these areas. Uh, gentrification is already happening.
All right, thank you. Um, are there any further comments on the plan, things we wanna see for the next iteration when it comes back? Questions? All right, um, I guess seeing none, thank you for the presentation, thanks all board members for the comments and feedback. One final call. Being no hands raised, um, that's all we have for the evening, I would entertain motions to adjourn. Looks like a motion by Bodri, and a second by Chris, perhaps. All right, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting for this evening, please admit yourselves and say, uh, uh, say aye. Pose no, chair believes unanimous, we're adjourned, thank you.